Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Carson City Redevelopment Authority to order. Today is Thursday, November 5th, 2015. It is just after 8:30 a.m. We're at the Community Center Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street in our very own Carson City. Can we have a roll call for the record, Sue? Thank you.
Good morning. Supervisor Baud?
Here.
Supervisor Bankowski?
Here.
Supervisor Shirk?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
We pay attention here.
Supervisor Mayor Kroll?
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Okay. All right. Let's stand and have a moment of silence. We don't have our message for the day, so let's just have a moment of silence and then... All right. We'll now move to item number five, public comment. This is a public comment at the beginning, at the end, and generally during the... take public comment as we move through the agenda. Anybody on public comment? Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Courtney Warner from the Senior Center.
Hi, Courtney.
Hi. I'm here to ask for your support for our upcoming fundraiser, Moonlight and Mistletoe, on December 5th with dinner, dancing, silent auction, and pictures with Santa. The benefit of this fundraiser is for our Meals on Wheels program, which delivers meals to our homebound seniors. And I wanted to call attention the need in Carson City. In 2015... 1415, we delivered over 62,000 meals to homebound Carson City seniors who were at risk of going hungry.
How many was that?
62,000. And we're currently projecting that in 1516, we could deliver 75,000 meals to just homebound Carson City seniors. So the need is great, and we're asking for your support for this fundraiser, December 5th. Tickets are available at the Senior Center, and if it's appropriate, I would like to also give you flyers as well, if it's okay?
Sure.
Thank you very much for your support.
You bet. No problem. Bring up the flyers. Go. I've got a question here, Courtney.
Courtney, if somebody can't be there, I assume that you accept checks?
We do accept checks, yes.
And how would they get those to you?
I am available today to put anybody on the spot. But at the Senior Center, of course, I will also go to anybody that would be willing to support us and pick up those as well. Thank you.
Hand out the flyers.
Anybody else, public comment? Anybody else? I don't see any. Then let's move to item number six. This is the approval, possible approval of the minutes of October 1st, 2015. Is there a chance to read them, motions, or whatever?
I move to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2015, as presented.
Motion, and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye, carried unanimous. Okay. On the agenda, city manager, any changes to the agenda?
The only change, Mr. Mayor, item 8B. Carol Howell will do that presentation next meeting, November 19th.
Okay. All right. Any board members, any changes? I don't see any unless there's an objection, then we'll take the agenda as published. Let's now leave the dais and go down on the floor and present a proclamation for National Family Caregivers Month.
Good morning, Mayor.
How's it doing?
Not accustomed to public speaking, is it?
Right.
I'm comfortable with it, too.
It's good to have you up here, Gil. Okay. I'll manage this one hand here. This is a proclamation for National Family Caregivers Month, November 2015. And with me here is Mr. Gil Yannick. Does all things related to helping seniors and AARP and all that stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Whereas family caregivers play an increasingly important role in the well-being of loved ones, providing unpaid assistance with both health care tasks and activities of daily living, and whereas more than a third of Nevadans over the age of 50 currently provide unpaid care for a parent, spouse, disabled child, or other relative or friend, and whereas more than 500,000 family caregivers in Nevada provide unpaid assistance equivalent to... this is a staggering number, 348 million hours and an estimated value of $4 billion a year. And whereas the proportion of Nevada's population that is over 60 is growing more rapidly than other components... yeah, I can tell that. And the United States Census Bureau estimates that about 24% of Nevadans will be over age 60 by 2030. And whereas older adults who receive cost-effective services at home are more likely to continue to live independently in communities without needing nursing home care or utilizing public assistance, and whereas to successfully address the surging population of older adults and others with significant needs for long-term services and support, we must develop methods to encourage and support Nevada's family caregivers while developing ways to recruit and retain a qualified responsive in-home care workforce. And whereas the CARE Act enacted by the Nevada Legislature will provide communication and training for family caregivers, ensuring smooth transitions home from hospitals and helping to prevent unnecessary readmissions. And whereas Carson City and partners across the state promote the CARE Act as a means to support family caregivers and keep loved ones living at home, and applauds the dedicated work of family caregivers and recognizes the caregiving for older, vulnerable, or disabled Nevadans as a vital and needed profession today and in the future. Now, therefore, I, Robert Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim November 2015 as Family Caregivers Month, and I'd like to present this to you, Gil. And I don't know if you've got others, but I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the board and have you give us a few words and tell us some things, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Let me do this here. We'll leave that here and there.
I have a few prepared comments here. First, before... for those members of the board who are returning from the land of milk and honey, shalom.
Whoa.
Baruch ha'ba. You know, it's interesting, a country to visit, and I know it's exciting for everybody. I haven't been there in about 15 years. My son was doing some cancer research there, and it's an amazing country. And, you know, we need... they need our support, and it's terrific for the board to be able to travel to Israel and see what they've been able to accomplish. So it's all appreciated. The mayor quoted some numbers for the state of Nevada as far as the number of hours of caregivers provide free of charge. Nationally, there's about 40 million Americans provide a collective total of 37 billion hours of free service to family members or parents. And if you equate that to dollars, like they did here in the state of Nevada, you know, we'd be looking at about $470 billion if those people were being paid to do that. I know some of the people in the room, and I know some people on the members of the board, have had that experience with parents, with loved ones, and you're really never prepared for it. It happens, and all of a sudden you realize the tremendous change that'll occur in your life as a result of becoming a caregiver. It's something you just can't expect, understand until you're put in that position. What AARP has done this month, in addition to National Caregivers Month, they've started a new program called Random Acts of Kindness. This is directed towards caregivers. It's AARP's guide to gratitude and payback to those heroes and heroines who recognize their own value in a society that has yet to fully appreciate what they're doing. And so what they come up with is a list of things that people can do for caregivers, and I'll just mention a few of them. Cook him or her a meal and deliver it, piping hot and time to relieve them of the chore of having to make dinner. Offer to pick up the prescriptions for persons who is getting care and deliver them. Write him or her a letter telling that you know how of his or her sacrifices and how you admire their perseverance. I mean, there's about 15 different items on this list, but I think it's important for friends and neighbors of people who are caregivers to realize the amount of responsibility that is foisted upon them, and they're doing their best to make up for it. And I think it's just a question of somebody recognizing the responsibilities and what they can do to help, and I think the proclamation that was read into the record today stands on its own, and I think is the recognition by the rest of the community and all the communities in the state of what... how important caregivers are. And I want to thank you very much for the proclamation and for the opportunity.
Oh.
That'd be great.
I'm going to take a photo of Gil. Okay. We'll now take up item number nine. This is juvenile probation. We've had this before, it's before. Scott, you're going to take us through it. I know you were here, so...
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Ben Bianchi, Juvenile Service.
Are you going to do it, Ben, or Scott? Either one?
I'm just going to introduce it, and then if there's questions or some concerns with the numbers, Scott can take it.
Very good.
But what I'm asking the board to do today is to allow the department to convert the on-call line item budget into a full-time position. Right now, we currently have 13 full-time employees to manage the juvenile detention center 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And with 13 people, with the minimum manning, it requires additional hours or additional staff in order to do so. And since 2009, we've been trying to recruit and maintain an on-call list, and that process is problematic in that those individuals, we train them, we don't know their availability. We reach out to get them to fill shifts, and a lot of times, they're not available, so we still have to pay overtime anyways. And more importantly to me than that is that those on-call people aren't getting the exposure and the daily investment into youth and what we do in the juvenile detention center. So at the end of the day, I mean, what we need is a highly trained, skilled, full-time employee who has the ability to come into that detention center and manage kids who are in crisis. We take them at intake after they're being arrested, many of which have mental health issues, and we are their family until they're released. And that continuity of care and that building of relationships with staff gives us that home-like environment that we... that is on our mission statement to provide these kids, and we really need a full-time employee to do that. And at the end of the day, it's not about cost savings, but it's about us having a full-time, highly qualified employee.
Very good. Scott, anything you want to add on that?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for having me back. I appreciate it. Just to add to what Ben said, it's important... the kids that we serve are extremely at risk. They generally don't have parenting. They're in custody because they've committed an offense that keeps them there. They're a danger to themselves and the community. And they lack stability, consistency, structure, discipline, everything in their lives that we hope to provide them once they get there. And with a full-time employee, we... it's easy for us to do it because it's a daily redundant activity for these kids. Bringing an on-call in actually puts us in a position where it's almost like bringing... taking a person's parent and replacing it with a stranger, because we build these rapport with these children and try to, you know, give them some normalcy and structure in their life, and with an on-call, we're unable to do that. So as on-calls have been important to us in the past, because of the backgrounds and because of the training and because of just the lack of consistency and the continuum of service that we want to provide these kids, we're unable... they've lost their effectiveness, and that's why we're asking to replace them with a full-time position. You know, I know it's expected of me to provide a good care. The citizens of Carson expect us to provide the best service we can, and this is what I believe is the best answer for our circumstance right now.
I know we had some talk about the fiscal impact, and I read it in the board action forum. We'll see if we need... how deep we need to go into that. Supervisor Bagwell has some questions here, so...
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you very much for bringing the item back to us with the detail that we needed to be able to understand your issue. And I wanted to also thank you for doing the organization chart, and I think it was handed out to everyone. I really appreciate that because it gives us a clear picture of what you're facing and what you're looking to achieve. So I really want to thank you for bringing us the necessary detail. I know it might have been a little bit painful to have to come back and stuff, but I want to thank you for doing the work so everyone can see the need.
Thank you. Gil, so far, Shirk?
Well, I mean, reading everything that your duties include is pretty thorough in your report, and it's also pretty amazing what you do for the community with these youths. I do have a couple of quick questions on page four when it says, "Physical restraint, youth when necessary." And my question is, do you have both male and female youth in this program? And would maybe a body camera be appropriate? We see a lot of instances where we're having problems with youth, and would a body camera be appropriate in this facility and in this environment?
I don't believe that we've ever had an instance where a body camera would be necessary. It would be something that wouldn't hurt. I mean, there are times where we have to restrain youth. A lot of the times, it's because of mental health issues that the youth may have. Maybe they're not... they're not on their medication correctly, and that's generally what happens when they come into custody. Maybe their parents aren't giving them their meds. Maybe their parents are taking their meds. We don't know. You know, but they come, we try to get them leveled out, but that's usually when we end up restraining kids. Very, very rarely do we have kids that are out of control just because of behavioral. They do... as this sounds terrible to say, but they do prosper in detention because of the laid-out rules. Everything is spelled out for them, and there is a youth advisor right next to them at all times, unless they're in their room. You know, basically, it's apparent. It's somebody that's there all the time to guide them, make them think correctly, give them good choices, and deal with behaviors as they happen. So we haven't, but I would say I would not be opposed to it. So if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you. And how many youths are usually in this program at this... when this is going through? How many do you usually have on an average?
It varies, but generally, it's somewhere between five and 10 kids in custody at one time.
And where is the detention center?
It's at the corner of Fifth and Solomon, right next to the juvenile court. Thank you.
And Supervisor Shirk, just to clarify, the majority of the facility is under camera at all times, with the exception of the rooms. So it's... everything's being documented.
Thank you.
Ben, just to be clear, this position won't eliminate overtime. It's more about consistency and qualified help with the kids, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It should help with overtime in that it will give us another body to backfill with. So it would eliminate the... when we can't find an on-call, then we're automatically in overtime because we don't have that 14th person. So with the 14th person, we'll have less shifts that we have to fill unless, you know, we have vacation, you got FMLA, you got sick. Those are the type of situations that feed overtime. But an extra body will... I'm hopeful it will reduce it to some point.
And two questions. First, the position, if we approve it, will it be filled in-house through one of the on-call people, or will it be put out for filling?
The answer is yes. We will do our best to use internal people, the on-call... the current on-call list that we have, and see if anybody was interested. If not, then we... yes, we'll open it up to the outside.
And then my second question is, if we approve this position, do you still see a potential need for some on-call positions? In other words, just because you're adding the 14th employee, if somebody is out, like right now, you have somebody out on family leave, I can still see that there might be a need occasionally for on-call. So what are your thoughts on that?
My feeling is that to move forward with the... the on-calls have been very valuable to us throughout the years, but there again, we have to weigh what's the best use of our money and time. And I feel as though, like I came to you at the first time, you know, I was spending the majority of my time doing backgrounds and training for people that really aren't consistently working. And so I think we've... the on-call classification for juvenile detention has outlived its effectiveness, and I think it's time to move forward at juvenile detention and not use part-time people at all. And I think this is our step to do that. Because it does... I mean, inevitably, it's the best service we can provide to the youth we serve and to this community. We've just... it's just not effective anymore to use part-time people. So that's my thought.
Any other questions from board? Public comment? Anybody? I don't know if there are any. Motion's in order.
I move to approve eliminating the on-call hourly positions in the Carson City Juvenile Detention Center, and in place of these positions, approve one full-time youth advisor position to replace the hourly on-call. I further approve to utilize the current hourly budget to fund the full-time youth advisor.
Motion by Supervisor Bagwell, second by Supervisor Aboud, and I think Supervisor Shirk, did I get that? On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye, carried unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Judge Russell and Mr. DA.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it very much.
Let's take up item 10, the HPP, the Ebola Preparedness Subgrant. Nikki, good morning.
Hi, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. Good morning. So I'm here to ask for permission to accept a subgrant through the state. It's for hospital preparedness for the Ebola response and preparedness activities. And what this is, it's... will be used to develop an Ebola response plan, which can then be equated to any infectious disease that we may be seeing. And then resulting will be a continuity of operations plan, and this will also incorporate updated CDC information on medical waste management. Also, we'll be assessing hospitals and emergency services protective... excuse me, personal protective equipment assets and helping them purchase assets if they need that. And we will be conducting a drill of our... with our area coalitions and hospitals. That first drill, it's unannounced, and it needs to focus on Ebola, but after that, we can focus on any infectious disease. And the subgrant for the first period is $48,630. You saw that with the documentation that was attached. It's... this is a five-year grant, and the five-year award is $80,663. With this, we will be using existing staff or contracting activities out. We will not be hiring additional staff for this position.
Nikki, on any personal protection equipment purchases, will that equipment be specifically for contagious disease, or would you have the ability to use it in any appropriate situation?
Well, any PPE equipment, you use it for certain situations. So that's like your glove, your gowns, your mask. There are certain gowns, masks that are used for different situations depending on what's out there. You know, with the masks, like there's some what's called N95, which are good for TB. So yes, there's... we will be purchasing equipment, and depending on the situation, you can use different levels.
And there's no issues with using the grant money for that since the grant's specifically for Ebola and then after that, additional contagious disease?
Correct. We can use the equipment. The equipment purchase or the gear purchase can be used for anything other than Ebola. It's just got to be specific to that disease and... not specific to that disease, but specific to the level of protection needed resulting from the disease.
Other board comments or questions? Go.
So in approving this today, are you asking us to go ahead and approve the whole 80,000, the five-year grant, or just phase one?
I would need you to approve the entire... yeah, though it'll be on... I won't come back for each year. It will be on a renewal basis.
Public comment? Board? Supervisor Aboud?
I move to accept the Hospital Preparedness Program Ebola Preparedness and Response Activities Grant through the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public and Behavioral Health, Public Health Preparedness Program.
Take it.
Motion, and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye, carried unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take up item 11. Everybody had a chance to look at the condition of the treasury issues? Any questions of Nancy? Question? Public comment? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through October 27th, 2015, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion, and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you Nancy. Well done.
Good job.
Yeah, she has the easiest job, huh?
Well done. It's all right. All right, purchasing and contracts. This is for the city landfill entrance to Armack. Who's doing it? Laura, you gonna take us through it, and then go?
Good morning, Laura Tadman, purchasing. This is to accept the work completed and approve the release of final payment for $14,176,050 for contract 1415-124 titled Carson City Landfill Entrance Repair to Armack Construction. The bid award was for $139,611. There were $1,695 in change orders, $9,459.3 in bid item adjustments, for a total project cost of $150,765.03.
Satisfied with the work?
Yep.
Okay. Supervisor Shirk, go.
Just a quick question on the forfeit to the city upon final approval for the Labor Commission. Is that a flat fee or a daily fee?
That is, for late reporting, the, the NRS does a, for first violation, that they actually do a determination on, it's $1,000. For repeat, it's $5,000. But those, those are set.
Seeing none, motions in order. Supervisor Aboud?
I move to accept the work is completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to approve the release of final payment in the amount of $14,176.05 for contract number 1415-124 titled Carson City Landfill Entrance Repair to Armack Construction LLC.
Motion, and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks, guys. Okay, all right. We've got another one here? I think we do. Stay there, okay. Fleet Facility Expansion, 12B.
This is to accept the work as completed and approve release of payment for $76,606.64 for contract 1415-019 titled Fleet Facility Expansion to Janey Gassio. The bid was for $1,456,97. There were $76,035.88 in change orders and no bid item adjustments, for total project cost of $1,532,132.88.
I've got a couple of questions. Go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to touch on a couple of these changes. There's 27 changes, I'd like to touch on seven of them if I could. It might stem some
Absolutely.
Some questions and discussion. All right, so on your packet, page three, change order one, item L, excuse me, HI, let me get my glasses. PCO 31, the carpet to sheet vinyl. During construction, it was brought to our attention by the, the flooring contractor that sheet goods would be best suited up there. The new fleet supervisor, we got together with him and others at Public Works, and we agreed that we get more life out of sheet vinyl, so we made that change in the open area, not in the offices, just to, for longevity purposes. The next item is change order one, next page, item M, PCO 23, the fiber optics, parks to fleet. This wasn't really an upgrade. What it was, was when we got into it, we were supposed to splice into the existing fiber cable that goes to parks. There wasn't enough slack in the line to perform a splice. So rather than put in a brand-new piece all the way from the street to parks, then splice into it, it was cheaper, shorter run to run a new run, leave that existing run in place, run a new run from fleet over to parks, upgrade the cabinet in parks, and then go that route, and then no splice at all. So that's what we did on that one. Change order two, PCO 24, the add-to-vehicle exhausts. This was an error in the plans. These two exhaust fans in the, the new facility were missed, and we had to purchase those and put them in to actually have that facility function as it was supposed to. PCO 22R, the visitor enunciator. This is one of the items that was pulled out during the VE, trying to keep this down into budget, and we added it back in once we figured out the money we had in place. And that's actually to where, when you come in, you can actually announce to the, a bell, buzzer if you will, announces to the mechanics and whatnot that there's somebody in the lobby because this is a secured facility. You can only walk into the lobby, you can't wander around like you could in years past in the fleet facility. And then item D, and that same change, 32, the addition of the two hose reels, that was another one. We had two future tanks that were, with the new systems that we're using, were going to be used, we had to add those in. We actually had accommodations for all the piping, we just didn't have the hose reels in the contract. Change order three, item C, that was PCO 1, to modify the door hardware. Again, that was another one, once we found out that we had all the monies in place, we had the infrastructure for the card reader system. We went in, we swapped out the, the hardware before we, we received it, and upgraded to the electric strikes and everything we needed for the card access system to make this a secure facility. And then the last item I wanted to touch on, change order four, item A, PCO 41, that was, oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, didn't I? Yes, I did. I just spoke on change order four, item A, sorry about that. Change order three, item C, was increasing the door size in the storage area between the two buildings so we can get forklift access to bring some of the engines and some of the other heavy equipment in between the two areas. So those are the ones I wanted to hit on. Sorry I mixed those two up at the end, but that's all I got for now.
Very good. Go.
Well, Rick, you addressed it very well. I just, I mean, I was kind of shocked at the extensiveness of the change orders when we got this information. Some of the others under item one, some of those couldn't have been anticipated ahead of time. Yes, no?
In hindsight, yes, but realistically, when you're, when you're putting together these bid documents and whatnot, sometimes you just, you just miss them. I mean, I won't, I'll never defend a designer, but at the same time, I agree, things, things happen and you just miss them. You think there's going to be one use, and it ends up being no. The designer thought one way, and the owner actually thought, no, this is how I wanted it to function, so we had to make those accommodations.
Rick, going back to the carpet, going from carpet to sheet vinyl, there must have been an allowance in the contract already for the carpet cost. So my question is, typically, I would expect vinyl and carpet to be about the same price. So can you tell us why vinyl, sheet vinyl, even if it's industrial-grade sheet vinyl, was $7,600 more?
Yeah, what we had in there is, is similar to what we have in here, carpet tiles, and they are cheaper than sheet vinyl, especially the industrial-grade, the thick welded sheet vinyl. And that's what, it, it's a large space, it's a large open area, it's a conference. If you guys went, took, took the tour, it's a large area between the two offices upstairs, and that is the difference. We did have the allowance in there, and that is the difference between the two, and it was just the cost of the two materials that we had specified.
Okay, and then, just a comment. If we value engineer a contract and it's brought to the board, and there is money in the contingency to add items back in, I'd really like to know that those items are being back, added back when we hear it, and not when we approve final payment. Just my feeling on that.
Jim, Supervisor Shirk.
I, when you read this list, it is quite, a lot of things were added back in. What would you do different so we don't have another circumstance like this again?
I wouldn't say a lot of things were added back in. There was a few that were added, added back in, the door hardware, and a couple of other things I mentioned. But most of these are items that either we didn't anticipate, or we ran into, there was, there was a, a conflict in, in the drawings, either in the information we gave the designer, the way the designer perceived, the way it needed to be put together, so to make it a fully functioning system. That's why the list is, is fairly extensive. Some of the items we did, we took some credits by moving windows from one wall to the other, and we took other credits to do other things throughout the, throughout the project. But, but it's, it's really kind of a, on a, on a building job, it's tough. It's a lump-sum job. It's, it's, it's really tough on buildings. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces, and there's a lot of things that, between disciplines, design disciplines, you're assuming that these are being connected in order to pick those things up. It's just, it's tough to catch everything. I, I will defend designers on that part.
On the extended time for two working days because they're not able to work in the area, I don't understand this at all. So why is there an extension of time by two days?
It was weather-related. We've had this discussion on other items I've brought up. There was, it was extensive rain at that point in time, we just couldn't get out there and work. It's not safe to be hanging steel and whatnot in rain. And if I remember correctly, those two days, that's when it was, the slab was poured, we had structural steel on site, and that's what we were doing at the time, was erecting structural steel.
This is to caulk plywood.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the other, the other days. This one here, we were actually in the, the equipment bays, we were actually doing all the finished work in there, and we had to actually close off that area and, and let them get in there, repaint, caulk. We had to pull everybody out of that main area to actually do that work.
And again, we had another instance where this was, they didn't make the, they got fined the $1,000 for, is that correct? Did I read that one right? For late submittal?
Yes, we did.
And we, we tracked those, so if they do it again, we, we'd fine them the $5,000 next time.
Yeah, and, and the state tracks that too. So these are, these are determinations that we actually filed with the state labor commissioner. They actually looked at them, reviewed them, went through objections, all that good stuff, actually came back with a finding, a legal finding, saying this is what we've done, and so it's in their record.
Thank you.
So, just a general question. When we allow a contingency on all the contracts that we do, kind of following along with what Brad was saying, is, do you use that for change orders and add-backs, and you're constantly monitoring the project to stay within budget? So you might be adding things along the way that we wouldn't be aware of because you're using the contingency amount and staying on budget? I'm just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, we definitely monitor it. I brought one to you last year that we went over, and it's not a good situation. But yeah, no, we're, we're continuously, continuously monitoring. I mean, my, my goal is to come back and have minimal change orders, not use the contingency at all. I mean, that's, that's the ultimate goal. But when it comes to functionality, we run into some items that, it's like, hey, you know, we thought we can do without this, we actually have to have this to make it function. There's, and the, the timeframe that a building gets designed and put together, personnel change, requirements change as to what we're looking to use those facilities for. So, those things get added back in at times.
If I may, Darren Schultz, for the record. What, we never, we never come before this board and award a contract with items that we have pulled out and we know that we're going to award during construction without letting you know that. So, that contingency balance, what we typically do is, throughout the duration of construction, determine how much we're spending on change orders, et cetera. And if at some point, we feel like we have, we have exhausted, there's enough money left in that contingency to add back in items that we pulled out prior to the bid that are important to the project, we will do that. But that decision is always made later, once we're under construction, and we have a feel that we can finish the construction within that contingency amount. So we can't make those decisions typically when we're ready to award and say, we have a 10% contingency, we're going to add these value engineering items back in during construction. We don't know that until we're, you know, a period has passed through construction that we know we have money remaining there.
But my question is, are they items that we know that you cut, that potentially you could add back? Or that we don't even know that there are items that you cut?
Generally, yes, yes.
I think what the decision is that we're
Generally, generally, you wouldn't know on the, the eight-cent projects, as those have been aired a lot more publicly, you, you knew the things that were cut back. But on a project like this, no, those discussions aren't had.
All right, okay.
Just to follow up on this, I guess what I'm trying to say is that a component is either important or it isn't important, at the end of the day, to the functionality of the building. So my preference is, if it's important, and you, for whatever reason it was value engineered out, I want to know when we hear the contract, you know, we value engineered this out, but we need this for the functionality of the building, so we're going to have it on the contract as an add option, and we're going to let the board decide if they want to approve that as part of the contract initially, rather than have these things come back at the end where we're not aware of what's going on, and it's coming out of contingency, because that's not necessarily what the contingency's for. So, I would rather build it right the first time and spend the extra money upfront. So I'm not going to speak for anybody else up here, but I can just tell you, my preference is, I'd rather see the base contract and the add options at the time that we hear the contract so that, and if you come to me and say, we really need add option A, B, and C for the functionality of this building, or we're going to come back to you in six months and ask for the money because we can't function, I want to know that upfront, and I'm most likely going to approve that as part of the contract. So, so that's kind of where I'm coming from on this.
And I agree with Brad, I'm sorry, I didn't press my light. But, I mean, this come to the board for our approval after everything's done, so when we say no, then what do we do?
Well, you, the, the purpose is that you've already said yes, and that you granted a 10% contingency when you awarded the contract. So the idea is, build this project, there's a 10% contingency of funds added to, if things come up during construction that, that need to be done, you, you grant that to us. So, it's, unless we go over that 10%, then we would have to come back to you with, for a special approval.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see anything. Supervisor Bonkowski, go.
I move to accept the work is completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to approve the release of final payment in the amount of $76,606.64 for contract 1415-019 titled Fleet Facility Expansion to Janey Gassio, Inc.
Motion by Supervisor Bonkowski, in a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you, Rick and Laura, thank you. All right. Do we really need to do 12C?
It's time, it's time for recess.
It's recess time, I think. No, come on, all right, come on Laura, let's, I'm just kidding the sheriff here. All right.
All right, this is to approve the purchase of six police vehicles through the state of Nevada's competitive bid list for a not-to-exceed amount of $238,700 to be funded from the vehicle replacement program as previously approved in the capital improvement plan and fiscal year 1516 budget, which has a current available amount of $340,000.
Go. Questions in order.
We approved seven vehicles, and are we purchasing one more for the sheriffs on a different bid? Don't want it now?
I'll start with it, and Zach can jump on me, especially if I say something wrong. We purchased up to the maximum that we could with the available funds that were, that were allotted out of CIP.
You don't have enough money to get the seventh, that we originally
That's correct.
You could get. Oh, wait a minute. That's not what, let, let me misunderstand something with you here. It says we have $340,000 available to purchase your, your vehicle line item, and this is only $238,700, so I don't understand. It's, what, what am I missing here?
As far as I understood, it was $297,000 that was funded for the sheriff's vehicle replacement, and I believe there's another $45,000 that is being funded for a parks vehicle replacement. And out of that, $295,000, the money that's left over out of the $238,000 we're going to spend is going to be outfit costs for those six vehicles.
So the, the available budget that was listed on this, on the statement here was for eight vehicles then? Let me, I can do some quick math, hold on, because the park one
When you, yeah, when you include the, the parks and rec department, it was for the eight vehicles. Parks had one, I believe, yeah, one pickup truck included in that CIP request and approval.
So how much short are we to get the seventh vehicle so that we can stay on track on vehicle replacement? How much
The cost of a vehicle and outfit.
How, how much from the line item detail that we approved in the CIP to get the parks and the seven sheriff vehicles are we short to let him buy his seventh vehicle?
Sheriff's vehicle fully outfitted, you're running around $55,000.
So, what's the net? What she's asking you is
Are we short $20,000?
What's, what's the shortfall if you were to assume that we wanted to buy seven here today?
Right.
What's the shortfall? I got you on the 55,000 or the 50, just what's the net? It's about roughly $20,000, but go ahead.
It would
No, the, the net, the net would be 55,000 because
The net would be $55,000. The money that's left over from our initial purchase is going to go to the outfit of those six vehicles. So, you would have to account for purchasing one more vehicle and its outfit. And it'd be $55,000 total that we need to come up with.
So, the answer then is, is that there's... There is zero money for a seventh vehicle after you buy six and uptick them? The answer is, is that there's zero money left for buying a seventh vehicle after you buy six and upgrade them to be police vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, that's why you're saying that the actual cost of a vehicle is how much? With the upgrades?
With upgrades, it's $55,000.
$55,000, okay.
Okay, so, we were wrong by $20,000 a vehicle for the costs when we put it in the CIP?
No, you were not wrong.
I'm trying to understand.
In CIP, it lists several vehicles that are not an optimum vehicle for our use and purposes here, such as Impalas. Impalas do provide a basic function. But as you all know, because we've had quite a bit of news this week, our responsibilities extend far out into the hillsides. And this, the SUV style and the Tahoe is the preferred purchase.
We changed the vehicle type, which is why it's more expensive.
Well, they're also moving targets. If a vehicle is in between the time that a CIP list is that I'm looking at right here is created and the time of purchase, if another vehicle becomes so mechanically expensive to function, that vehicle could end up taking one of those places.
Sufazir, about.
So, Kenny, with the vehicles that are being replaced, are you gleaning any monies from salvage on those vehicles?
The salvage money would be minimal on those vehicles. You're only looking at maybe about $1,000 to $2,000 a unit. And that cost can fluctuate with just going to auction the... If everybody want that vehicle, if it's popular, on what's going on at that point in time. So, but the vehicles that we are getting rid of have upwards of 160,000 to 180,000 miles on them. So, they're pretty well wore out.
Okay, so, can you run down what we're actually buying then? Because on the original list, there were two Tahos, one Suburban, four Impalas. What are we... It looks like we're getting now five Tahos and one pickup truck. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are the board comments? Public comment? Ready for motion? We'll try it. Give a motion. Okay, Sufazir, about, go.
I move to approve the purchase of six police vehicles through the state of Nevada's competitive bidding list for a not-to-exceed cost of $238,700 to be funded from the vehicle replacement program as provided in the capital improvement program and in the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget.
There's a motion and there's a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Carried, okay. All right, let's take up... Sheriff, you're there. Let's take up the OTS grant for... I'll take it from there.
Yeah, well, yeah. This is item number 13A. It's an action item to accept the Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety grant, JF 2016 CCSO 00035, joining forces in the amount of $41,000 and allow for the use of the funds as authorized to proceed documents are issued. This is, in reality, the largest joining forces grant that we've received. And if you'll note in your staff summary that it clarifies the total amount of this award is $41,000. However, at this time, our authorization to proceed is only at $18,250. We proceed as they make the funds available.
Board comments or questions? Go.
Hey, Kenny. Why is distracted drivers and pedestrian safety, why are those events almost twice as much as the impaired drivers or the click it or ticket events? Are they longer? I mean, why is it that they're almost twice as much?
Labor-consuming for both of them. And those are two very hot items that we want to keep our eyes on. As you all know, many, many of our, especially pedestrian accidents, are a result of inattention. And, you know, giving a little bit of credit to the drivers, both pedestrian and drivers. And bringing these to the attention of the public actually saves lives.
So, you're saying it requires more staff on your part to put those events on?
It can require more staff and events.
Anything else from the board? Here's a question, Sheriff. And listen, I agree with the grant. I just having... The question is, these are events that are going to occur. Are we putting more people on there? Or we... What are we doing to comply with the terms of the grant? I mean, it seems like, you know, if there's a DUI, we've already got people out there. So, are we going to put more people out there? What's the theory on how this grant really works in terms of accomplishing its goal?
I apologize. Yeah, these people are extra folks out there doing these events. They're not doing the normal patrol functions. They are dedicated to that event. In order for that, to fulfill the grant requirements, that's all they're doing. If they're doing... If I'm a regular patrol officer and you're on grant enforcement, I might do a DUI, but that doesn't apply over to the grant. You're doing the activity does.
Okay. Lori.
So, does that mean it's generally overtime that officers get to come do this program? Because your regular staff is still on duty?
It's an overtime issue, yes.
Thanks. I may have misread the grant too. But that clarifies it for me. Kind of a stupid question on my part, but all right. All right. Anything else, board, public? Motion's in order.
I move to accept the Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety grant, JF 216 CCSO 00035, joining forces in the amount of $41,000 and allow the use of funds as authorization to proceed documents are issued.
Motion by Sufazir Bagwell. A couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Hearing none, carried unanimous, okay. Let's take up 13B.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, could we just take like about a...
No, we'll take a break. We'll take 10 minutes.
Three minutes, five minutes?
We'll be in recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna recall the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're now on item number thirteen B. This is the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services grant in the amount of $375,000. Who's gonna take this start?
I'm gonna take the start.
You've got a whole lot of people here, so you're gonna start, huh?
Yeah, yeah, because if five of you get around the last one.
All right, all right.
Reinforcements.
Let us know when you're done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item to accept the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Order in Policing Services grant, and I'm gonna take you through a short slide presentation. I promise you it won't be that long, but the intent is that we provide you with the very same information that we did provide to the school district at a meeting several weeks ago. It was suggested that we probably should have asked that all of you be together to discuss it as one small.
So you've got members of the school board here today, so.
Pardon me?
You've got members of the school board here today.
Come on up here. The challenge was timing. This came in on one specific day, and the agendas just would not probably have allowed it, considering everybody's schedules. So she's gonna keep me straight and say, "That's me, you didn't give us that."
I'm right in arms' length here.
Sub标题 for this, as I said, is "Possible action to accept U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Order in Policing Services grant, award 2015 UMWX-0049 in the amount of $375,000." This was culmination of about a three-year process that we've communicated to you in an attempt to provide a school resource officer program here in Carson City. Approval of the vote will commit funds to begin the process of accepting the grant and increasing the sheriff's office FTEs by three and staffing the school district with a program. Disapproval of the vote today, to decline it, would ultimately end this process as it stands. The grant application does require approval of both school board trustees and the Carson City Board of Supervisors. The school board trustees approved this grant process on...
Last Tuesday of October.
That was Stacy Wilkie for the record.
Stacy Wilkie for the record, school board trustee, on the 28th, and it was approved unanimously, seven to zero.
We did receive this grant notification effective October 1st, 2015. As everyone is aware, that is past. We are in a window period right now of accepting the grant. The sheriff's office was notified, and the purpose was to stand up the cost to create a viable school resource officer program here in Carson City. I'm gonna briefly go over fiscal responsibility of the grant, and then after we're through, I would like to come back to this, and Ms. Heath, our chief of financial affairs, is going to give you a little bit more detail. In total, the three-year cycle is $877,131. The grant will provide for $375,000, while the total match in this grant is $502,131. The grant's cycle is actually a four-year cycle. The first three years have been scheduled out for a match and federal funding. The fourth year is a full commitment by the city and the school district. Beyond that, there are no strings attached to this grant. It becomes our responsibility as a community. As presented to the school board, this grant assumes a 50-50 responsibility to the costs. What this does cover, the grant covers, is entry-level officers' base pay and standard officer benefits. What it does not cover is overtime, training, uniform allowances, contractual obligations, personnel protective equipment, and capital equipment needs. We have done very well in the past, working with the school district, on sharing some of those with the most efficient opportunities, such as some of the trainings, some of the capital needs for the officers. I know that there has been, and we just talked about it here a few moments ago, talk about vehicles and such, how are you gonna get these officers to and from and such? Well, there's capital equipment needs that are operationally essential to a school resource officer program that the school district works very closely with us on, and we have been sharing those needs for many, many years. This is a very important slide, because this is the philosophical foundation for the school resource officer program. Currently, and I'm gonna use her name, just because that's where she is assigned, the sheriff's office employs Ms. Lisa Davis, and she primarily is responsible for educational opportunities in our elementary schools. That has been very, very successful in dealing with education, such as dare, alcohol, bullying, all of these types of activities. Incidentally, right now, as we speak, Ms. Davis is down at the sheriff's office, teaching the high and plain sight, which you approved at the last meeting. These education opportunities really provide us with a foot forward in the future. As it stands today, I go straight down below to the high school. Right now, we are covering the high school with a patrol officer, which is taken away from our beat assignments, and effectively, that eliminates a real close relationship or liaison or activities, including criminal activities, as related to the two middle schools. And for your convenience, I did print out, I did not put it up on the slide, because it's way too much information. If we were to look back to the year 2014, the area of greatest concerns age factors in Carson City appear to be in that 13- to 14-year-old age range, and those are our kids that are facing the greatest challenges in life as they come out. What this program will provide for is Lisa Davis continuing in our elementary school-level educational opportunities, one officer assigned to Carson City Middle School, one officer assigned to Eagle Valley Middle School. Effectively, the two officers that are assigned to the middle schools will have an enforcement responsibility capability for the elementary schools that are on their sides of the town, in other words, an east and a west. That will create a handoff for these children coming out of our elementary schools, familiar with Lisa Davis, and which does fulfill one of our goals, in that all children in our school district know a police officer by their first name, and Lisa's about as popular as you can make it, as you can get in town. She will effectively hand off these children over into our middle school environments and continue that relationship model building, hoping to identify challenges and risks that we are facing down the road. Those two officers will effectively, in the course of a child's educational development, move on to the high school, where they will be handed off again. And we hope, we sincerely hope and we pray, that our children will graduate from high school, go on in life, have families, and bring their kids back to Carson City School District, because this is the safe place to raise children and families. That's our ultimate goal.
Also, we discussed that by doing that, it gives those kids a sense, from when they go from the elementary school to the middle school, they have that place, and they've seen that person, and they've had contact, so that when they go to the high school, they'll have that contact, so that there'll be more of a relationship between them to give information about stuff that might be coming, instead of keeping it under wraps. So it gives a building relationship from the elementary to the middle, and then to the high school, where some of the problems, major problems happen.
Goals of the program is to enhance the security measures within the school district. Officers have been, will be added, an added component to the physical safeguards, and I think Mr. Brinkowski brought this up to me earlier this week. The school district has invested quite an amount of funds and efforts and construction costs to safeguard our schools with added security measures, such as closing campuses, fencing around, narrowing entry points to the schools, so that we can control who's coming and has access to our children, video surveillance systems and such. Yet, at this point in time, we just have not been able to reach that added component of personnel commitments. We want to reduce the occurrence rate of youth offenders. This is a measurable piece of data, as I said, I brought one today. It's commonly referred to as uniform crime reporting. It allows us to look back in history and see where our challenges have been, and focus in on measurable outcomes that we hope to achieve over the next three to four years. With that, one of those measures is that attendance rates in our schools. I believe, I sincerely believe, that our schools are safest when our truancy rates are at their lowest. In other words, those kids that are struggling, those kids that feel that they don't belong, those kids that are having problems, when we have them at their desks inside the schools, we reduce the risk factors of an incident taking place. So the role of the officer is going to be education, prevention, and enforcement, unfortunately, through direct and continuous contact on a daily basis with the educators, administrators, and with the youth in the community. This is a partnership that we're stepping, that we're embarking on. The key players, most of which are sitting right here with you today, obviously, the sheriff's office is willing to take on that responsibility of a school resource officer program. That is not uncommon, in fact, it's most common throughout the country, that local law enforcement jurisdiction provide that function. It is an efficiency method, because it provides for law enforcement folks to be supervising, training, and staffing law enforcement persons. The school district, obviously, is here with us today, and I appreciate that very, very much. I needed your back. Mr. Woodbury from the district attorney's office, our juvenile services folks are here today, and I don't believe we have anybody from Ron Wood, but I do wanna... Oh, yeah, sorry, you and I are both on the Ron Wood Board of Directors. I forgot. I would remind the folks that historically, the Ron Wood Family Resource Center stood up on the platform of truancy and getting kids back into the schools. We're not doing our community any service when we're holding kids in detention that could otherwise be in their classroom. We're not doing any good when we're not going to the homes and fast-tracking, "Why is Johnny not in school?", and getting to the source of the problem. Indirect partnerships include partnership Carson City, our Boys and Girls Club, who we work very, very closely with, Parks and Recreation, Safe Graduation, Scholastic Sports Programs, and Safe School Routes. All of these folks, and many, many more, have a connection to this program, and you might ask, "Why?" Well, when school effectively ends on graduation day, let's call it that, Safe Grad is outside of the school district's responsibility, yet we still provide services for our students. Our Parks and Recreation programs, Roger Melendorf runs them all summer long throughout here, this provides opportunities there. Our juvenile services provide summer activities for at-risk juveniles, in hopes of creating a better focus on life. That, again, is another opportunity. So the stretch of the arm in support of this program reaches pretty far in depth, to a depth inside the community. The duties and responsibilities of this activity are widespread, and maybe, Mr. Brinkowski, you and I had a discussion about the focus of it. There is one goal, and that's to safeguard our schools. That's it. Everything else is a functional responsibility or an objective that is put in place to reach that goal. We want to ensure that our campuses have a security element on the campuses that afford an enforcement opportunity. For example, when you have, such as the Carson High School, a closed campus, yet there's no one there to enforce it, that brings on a challenge tremendously heavily. We want a student mentoring opportunity with these officers. We believe that the relationships that we build with our youth will have an impact on their future, and I think that every one of us can think back, some of us might have to think back further than others, those people that we looked up to when we were children, and we wanted to be just like them. Our officers will participate in the classrooms and faculty education. They will provide for some level of school zone enforcement, traffic enforcement, as well as bus routes. Lost and missing juveniles will fall under these folks, because this program has the greatest access to our kids. Gang-related crime prevention is essential. We've made tremendous progress in the last five years, thanks to the funding from this board and the federal government, to combating gang activity here in Carson City, and I would hate to see that slip off. And incidentally, much of our gang activity, early development, does begin in that middle school-range environment. Drug and alcohol prevention enforcement, truancy, and our student SARB board is going to be a focus. Juvenile Services is absolutely a key partner in this relationship. As I said, Parks and Recreation, our cadet programs, and our student senior projects. In other words, we want to take part and be a part of their education, because these functional responsibilities or objectives lend right straight back to safeguarding the schools. If our relationship is strong enough, and we've all seen it on the news, what occurred in the school just recently. If our relationships with the students are strong enough, we hope to be able to defuse incidents such as that, because of our relationships, and keep that child at school in a better environment than possibly in a protection incarceration environment. The command structure is this. Obviously, Mr. Stokes and I have a huge part of the responsibility of providing for our children's safety on the campuses. Our Assistant Sheriff of Operations, which is where this grant opportunity will fall under, will oversee that. I'm hoping that the school district will provide for an operations as well. Each of those segments will provide fiscal and programmatic reporting opportunities, so that we can ensure grant compliance at every step along the way. And I've already gone through our assignments. I do want to come back to one thing. The SRO Prevention Programs Coordinator Program, that is currently assigned to the elementary schools, is not a piece of this grant, okay? So effectively, what we're having is four, but only three of them are a part of the grant. We've had Ms. Lisa Davis in our schools for about 10 years now, and the school has provided us with an excellent opportunity to do that. It's been a great relationship. That's the presentation that we provided for the school board, and now we are open for questions.
Okay.
Every light lit up?
I got a bunch here, so Jim, why don't you go, and then we'll go down here.
Sheriff, in the beginning, on one of the slides, you said what this grant does not cover was contractual obligations. What does that entail?
It can entail a variety of things. Contractually, for example, we provide physical fitness incentives. That would be a contractual obligation that would not necessarily be included in a grant program.
It doesn't go so far as health and welfare and benefits like that, it's more on the line that you just mentioned, correct?
Correct.
And will these officers be carrying a weapon?
I do not intend on changing our role in the elementary school environment. Lisa Davis does not carry a weapon in the schools with these youngest children, of the other three officers will.
And do you, I'm gonna bring this back up again, cameras on these individuals, do you think that's a good idea or a bad idea?
You've opened up a 30-minute discussion. Cameras are an inevitable function of law enforcement and those that work with, that have arrest powers. The challenge to cameras is the infrastructure that supports them. It is enormously expensive. I joked with the Nevada Appeal, because of an editorial mistake, it's not $5 million. I would estimate that in order to staff our officers with cameras, we would have to come to you and ask for about a half a million dollars. It's not the camera that is so expensive, it's the infrastructure, it's the protection of rights to the officers, it's the protection and privacy to the people who are being filmed. some. But the infrastructure is far, far more intensive. We have two opportunities that we are currently following. Nevada Highway Patrol has been legislative, given legislative direction to establish a program along, parallel to that, Clark County, I should say Metro Police Department is doing their own without that legislative direction. So it provides us with two very good examples of in-depth policies and processes that are going to be required in order for us to place cameras on people. Because remember, those cameras are capturing information that can be extremely sensitive to you and I. They don't just capture just the one piece that gets to the news.
It was less than 30 minutes, so that was good. The officers for, when the school's cycle is done, then where do these officers go? What would they be doing at that juncture?
I have reached out to some experts and, of course, worked with our own. There are several opportunities. Many of the officers who work in the school environments take their vacations, if you will, during the summer months, realizing that they have a responsibility during the school year. Most of the trainings that's going to be afforded is going to be done during the summer months, but we have an enormous amount of summertime activities that the school resource officer program can support, including those activities at the Boys and Girls Club, Parks and Recreation, Juvenile Services. All of these are opportunities to build relationships and help our kids through a very strenuous period.
And what about sick leave or anything when these officers are employed? Do you have backup to take their place?
Very, very good question. This will be a standalone program, unlike in patrol. If the three of us have assignments and I call in sick, well, then somebody else is going to have to come in and backfill me. In the school program, that won't be an issue. It's a three-man team. We've set up the environments, but there won't be a backfill.
And I do want to say, I think this program is really, really beneficial to the youth of our community, and I congratulate everyone for putting this together. I think it's well worth the investment in our children. Thank you.
I think before we, just let me follow up on one question there that came to my mind on officers. What's the process you'll use by picking the officers that you're going to put in the schools?
That's probably one of the best questions because there's two schools of thought here, and it's an operational decision that I have actually put on the calendar for Monday, pending this meeting today. The officers will, because of the size of this community and the responsibilities of law enforcement and public safety and how we work with all of our entities, including fire and such, the officers are going to have to be category-one post-certified, in other words, first responders. In addition to that, we, I will, I already know what's going to happen, they will have to be patrol-certified officers. The reason being is they're not, they are working in a school, but they're not working alone. Those patrol officers have that ability to move in and assist, as we did with Mark Twain Elementary School just about a week ago. But by doing that, it doesn't deplete the rest of the community. So they are going to be category-one officers. The flip side of the coin, and it's not an optimal challenge or optimal approach for me, is that you hire people that are capable of working with children and very unique in talents. But the problem with that is you diminish that relationship with first responders in the community because they don't have it. So those that are being hired will probably run through an assignment process. The people who are going into our school environments are going to be seasoned officers. They are all familiar with our schools, and they will, and we will work it through that process.
Okay. Karen, did you want to go? I think you were going to go.
Yeah. I think this is a wonderful program as well and much-needed. And so my concern is, after the grant cycle is over, then what? How's the school district going to approach this? And I know it's a matter of budgeting on our end, but Stacy, can you address that?
We did have that discussion at our meeting, and what Mr. Fueeling had told us is he has forecasted out after year four that we should be able to continue this for at least three to four years without having any major cuts. But it depends on the legislature, of course. But yeah, we had already looked at forecasting and keeping it going after year four.
And then Kenny, the only other question I have is since these officers will be dealing with truancy, that has a tendency to take them off the campus to deal with that issue. So how much time will be spent dealing with that?
Each of the officers will have a home-based assignment. I'm hoping that they get an office with a next Carson High School Cup for the on-campus responsibilities. And I think that we have an efficiency opportunity that we're not pursuing real aggressively right now, although there is some opportunities. These officers will be able to leave the schools, visit the other schools, support their programs, as well as receive information from, let's say, a principal and says, Johnny has not been here in the last four days, he's been experiencing problems in his class or relationships within the schools. Rather than going through the government red tape, deputy, can you go to his house and address Johnny and his parents? This is a key factor, and I'm glad you brought that up, because very often, officers look at school counselors and say, well, why can't you do that? But on the flip side, they have that perception because we do it every day. The reality of it is, some of these environments that a counselor or an officer will go into can be rather stressful. Is that a good word to use? And so as we try to cut off those problems from occurring throughout the year, there's opportunities upfront. Johnny has not been in school, and we're concerned about him. He's exhibited some behavior. Would you please do a home visit?
Just to back up on that, I think we eliminated the counselors in the elementary schools anyway. And I think by having, officer actually adds more credibility to go to the house and talk to him, where if we had a school counselor, even if we did to go talk to him, it's not going to have the impact that Mr. Furlong's officers or the SROs would have. The other thing is it's building up our communities too, because a lot of our elementary schools are very community-based, and by having the SROs in the middle schools, we think that that's going to build that community up too. And we're looking forward to having that relationship.
Stacy, by Kenny's estimates, this program, over the four years, is going to be a minimum cost to the school district and the city of $827,000 plus uniforms, vehicles, contractual obligations, equipment. So when you add those estimates of those items back in, I can see this four-year cost being in the neighborhood of $1.1 to $1.2 million. So does the school district understand what that financial obligation is? I mean, did they understand when they approved that, that they're actually approving maybe $300,000 a year? And then if this program were to continue after the fourth year, that that cost is going to be probably $400,000 a year that will go up maybe by 10% per year?
At least. It'll probably go up to half a million with, after the grants because of the, you know, the patrol cars and stuff, the capital exhibits. We did, like, we, our budgeting right now is kind of like this because of the legislature. We used to have count day on the first week of September, so we knew exactly how much money we were getting for the year. The legislature changed it so that it's now quarterly basis. So we're not quite sure what our numbers are going to come in. But we know that Mr. Fueeling did look at these four years specifically, and then I know that Mr. Stokes asked him to look at it to see if we could do it on a continuing basis. Our board right now feels that this is really important. We spent the last three years using our bond funds to make sure that we had one entry to every school, including the high school, because it's such, safety is such an important thing for our board and our community, that we were going to do other things with that bond money, but decided that it was more important to redo. I think we did six schools that had to have a single entry. And to us, this is just a continuation of this. Kathy's been trying this for three years to get this program going. She's gone and done the paperwork every year, and then, and I know she's had a lot of help, but we've been looking forward to this for three years. So it's not like all of a sudden Kenny came to the meeting and said, look, we got it, we're going to do this. This is something that we've actually projected out and looked forward to having. And even if we weren't going to get the grant, it was something that was on the back burner of some of our minds because we, safety was the number-one goal of this, of the school board this last three years.
Great. So I just wanted to make sure that we had on the record that the school district does understand the financial obligation here. And obviously, we have to make sure that we understand it. Kenny, in your grant application, there's a section on page 21 where you say that your preference would be to have five officers, but the grant funds three officers, and you and I had a conversation about that. What are your future plans for the program? Do you see this as a program that always runs on three officers, or would you see growing this program in the future?
I want her crystal ball. I believe that when you create an efficient program, that these three officers are going to be sufficient to staff our schools. I am concerned to some degree that these three officers are deputy sheriffs. There is not a level of supervision that is embedded in the program to compensate for that. Assistant Sheriff Sandage has been working with one of our sergeants to take this on as an additional responsibility. He's a sergeant that would be on duty during the daytime and most capable of working with the schools. So I do not see us putting more officers in the school inside my crystal ball.
Going to performance measures, how do you take your current data that you report and create a baseline so that you can measure improvements from this program so that three years from now, when we come back to this to review it, to see if we want to continue it, that we can actually see that there was a measurement taken and see what the results of that were?
I didn't bring my glasses, and so I'm going to be a little bit challenged here. Currently, and I do want to emphasize that because Mr. Brankowski and I did communicate, there are some changes coming down the pike for Nevada law enforcement statewide. We can look at each of the offenses that sheriff's deputies are challenged with arresting children for. We see on a yearly basis how old they are. We see on a yearly basis their race. We see on a yearly basis their ethnicity. And if these numbers weren't so small, I'd read off a whole line, but that's just going to be absolutely impossible. In working with Ben, and Ben and I have been, joined at the hip on this, this list is not completely all-inclusive, so we will have to collaborate our data together because his officers may create other opportunities or have not conflicting data, but data that is solely driven by juvenile services. Ben?
That's correct. As far as the data goes, you know, my goal of this program is to reduce arrests, reduce citations, early intervention, diversion, and partnering with the school resource officer and becoming teammates and getting that person out of the box and looking at law enforcement a little bit differently than the typical deputy. That might not be answering the question, but as far, going back to the data part of it, we do maintain stats, and we will be sharing that with them because, you know, the majority of the arrests, majority of the kids that are referred to juvenile services, they don't end up on formal probation. It's all handled in the way of a diversion. And moving this forward, I'm hopeful that we can reduce the referrals, reduce the arrests, and get interventions in place without using handcuffs.
And I'd like to share with the rest of the board an example that I provided for you. In years past, we identified one area of town that was particularly economically hit, wasn't really a part of anything. Public Works came in, they did a complete redesign of the area, redoing the streets, redoing the sidewalks. The Chamber of Commerce and the Quality of Life Committee brought in services for the youth in that area. There was a lot of church participation, sheriff's office participation. And we were stunned, both Ronnie Hanneman and I, when the data that came back suggested that crime had gone up. Well, when, what that meant was the total volume of crime had gone up. The reality of it was violent crime had plummeted, and crime that had never been reported before began being reported, such as domestic violence, such as property damage. And the conclusion that I drew out of it was what we had achieved is a greater level of trust and relationships with that particular community environment. And this goes right back to what we're talking about here, is creating a larger level of trust and mentoring and relationships with our juveniles here in this town and providing them with opportunities to say, you can come to us. You can come with your problems, and we will listen.
So here's my $64,000 question, and Kenny, Ben, and Jason, you may all want to chime in on this. This program is a preventative program as opposed to our current system, which is enforcement. So give me your estimates on effectiveness and cost of implementing a preventative program versus our current cost for just enforcement. So in other words, right now, we arrest people, or we refer them somewhere, or we throw them in juvie. So do you believe that this program, over time, over the long term, will save society and the city money? Or is it going to be on par with what we spend now? Or do you believe that the cost will go up? And how does the effectiveness of the program help societal cost? Told you it was a $64,000 question.
Dude, can I get that into grant? Get another vehicle out of it. It really is a great philosophical question. How do you put a dollar value on the prevention of an incident that otherwise did occur? I'm going to try and answer this thing as short as possible. It was about 18 months ago. A student left the high school who had been bullied, or at least he felt he had been, walked across the street, got one of his parents' pistols, and came back to the high How much money was saved because he did not shoot anybody?
Lots. No, and I think you put your finger on it, Supervisor Brankowski, is the frustrating part about law enforcement is it's always reactive. We're always playing defense. We're always acting after the fact. And the exciting thing about this opportunity is that it gives us a chance to be more proactive and possibly prevent something before it occurs. There's a lot of data out there that indicates that when a home is falling apart, when there's something bad happening in the home, that one of the first things you're going to see, maybe the first thing you're going to see, is truancy. The kids stop coming to school, or the kids start having trouble at school. And that's where, you know, it's not just a Johnny issue, it's a home issue. And these opportunities to have a home visit are a good thing because maybe we get in there and we see that the home is falling apart, and we can do something about it before it results in handcuffs and things like that.
So to answer Kenny's question, just to throw a rough number out there, what does a murder trial cost in the city?
A murder trial's going to cost about $200,000, and that's a non-capital murder case for us to prosecute it and put it together.
Ben, do you have anything you wanted to throw in there?
Sure. I'm in complete agreement about the proactive approach to law enforcement and building relationships with kids and giving, giving, going back to the root of the issue is, how can we go wrong investing in our children? And by building that relationship with a man or man or woman in uniform and I think it speaks volumes to how far that's going to reach generational. We're building bridges. We're gaining trust. And it's the non-typical approach. Usually when law enforcement shows up, somebody's going away, whether it's county jail or detention. The way I see this rolling out is deputy shows up, they're able to communicate, they're ready, able to de-escalate, they're able to do case management type of interventions, as opposed to always having to think, I got to take the bad guy in. This isn't about bad guys. This is about assessing the situation and seeing what we can do to get things in place to change behavior. And I truly believe those relationships are the way we get self-change as opposed to just forced compliance. So, long-term, I think it's going to save a lot of money and benefit a lot of people's lives.
And just referring to comment you made earlier, I would suspect that you'd probably see arrests go down, but referrals go up in a preventative program.
And that's a wonderful thing, because we take the referrals, that's fine. We want to meet with these kids, and we want to meet with these families, and we want to get to know them and make judgments as to what we need to do to support them and give them the services they need.
And final question, this is probably for you, Nick. If we approve this program, where's the money come from? Or Nancy?
Nancy thought she was not going to have to talk.
No, I'm going to bring the CFO up for this. We have looked at it for all four years, and even then looking beyond. So Nancy?
Nancy Paulson, Chief Financial Officer. I was able to plug in all of the matching amounts for the four fiscal years, and that would not change, and we would be able to cover those amounts without changing what our projected ending fund balances were in our five-year projections, and also how much we had reserved for capital.
From where, though?
Oh, from the general fund, from increases in the C-Tax projections.
So let me understand. What you're saying is you've re-projected what we currently knew we had in dollars because of current receipts. So then you've now taken current receipts and continued that on for five years, as if those receipts are going to remain?
That's correct. I took actual fiscal '15 receipts for C-Tax, and I've projected a 4% increase per year. And year-to-date, we only have two months in, but we're currently looking at 7.3% increase. It's about $380,000 for fiscal '16.
And those projections, though, that you've plugged in are only based on these particular numbers given, which do not reflect 100% of the costs of the program, because there are no vehicles in this match. At some point, whether he absorbs vehicles today within his fleet and uses some of the vehicles earlier, or he doesn't actually retire them and uses them for these officers, they're not going to last four more years, five more years. So have you projected in the recognition that they're going to need vehicles in that model?
I have not included that in the projections, just the match amounts that were included in the board item.
So I want to be clear, and I think I'm going along with Brad, with the school district, that you're going to have to pay half of the actual costs. And I'm not sure that you're aware of all the costs out there in the true projection, and that you're on board as the school district for the true cost of half of that. And one of the conditions in this grant is a memorandum of understanding is required to be done between the school district and the sheriff's office. So in that memorandum of understanding, can we maybe look and reiterate some of these costs? So I have an assurance that five years or four years down the line, this board's not trying to come up with extra money to fund something. And I want the public to be aware of the true costs of the program. We're not, it's not a bait and switch, or we'll come back in year three and say, oh, forgot to tell you, we need three vehicles. I just want to truly track the costs and then have the school district pay half of that. And so maybe we can detail it out a little better in the MOU.
We're not going to come back to you and ask for more vehicles.
You come back and ask us for vehicles every year.
We ask you for replacement vehicles.
Right.
We have not added to our fleet, except for on our own, through seizure monies.
You're adding three officers. You're increasing the need during the daytime for a vehicle. So how are we not going to, at some point, increase the fleet size?
We will use the existing fleet to support this function. That's what I'm telling you.
I'm still missing something. If I have 10 officers on today and I add three more, I need to use three more vehicles from a fleet to accomplish the tasks.
Correct. And what I'm saying is that we have, I believe, sufficient vehicles to take on this responsibility.
That won't need replacement?
What I'm saying is, we do not anticipate increasing the size of our fleet. We have about 70 vehicles. About 70. I have a slide I could, oh, I can't.
So you're saying all your vehicles aren't out at any given time on a shift, so you have additional vehicles to use?
Correct. We never have all of our vehicles out all of the time. Does that help? If we went to the sheriff's office right now, you will find three vehicles in the parking lot that are not in use.
Our objective is to, I thought that we discussed before on vehicles, was to begin a vehicle replacement policy, that we're going to do so many vehicles per year. So you're actually indicating as you grow your force, you don't need more vehicles, because I thought some were in repair, you don't need more fleet vehicles when you add more officers?
I appreciate it. The confusion is between adding to the size of the fleet or maintaining the fleet. That's where we're getting off track with one another here. Maintaining the fleet is a replacement cost for vehicles that are currently in service. We have done this for years. How do we get through this vehicle challenge that we have in the city? It's a capital issue. That's maintenance cost. When I refer to maintenance, I think our oldest frontline vehicle's a 1998 Ford, okay? How do we keep running with these vehicles that are that old? What I'm hearing from you is the question, are you going to buy new vehicles specifically for this program? And the answer is, no, we will absorb it with what vehicles we currently have. Will that add to the mileages? Yes, it will. I certainly hope it does. I wouldn't want these folks sitting down at juvenile or sitting in an office drinking coffee. I want them out doing things, building those reports. So from a capital side, that we address at every budget, on the maintenance of replacement items, yes, there's, we are in a deep hole. We all know that. I don't know that light can get in as far down as we are. And I don't say that as a beg, plead pitch. It's a reality. When the economy fell out, capital suffered tremendously. From a availability of resources, I have the resources currently available to support this function. Does that help?
I'm listening and understanding what you're saying. I just don't believe that you add, I don't think it's appropriate to be adding them without adding the vehicles, and that that's a cost, and exasperate your poor fleet problem as you have now. That's the reality here that I need the public to understand. We are in a hole. We don't have enough to replace vehicles that are aging. That's a good way to say it. And I'm concerned that if you have to take three more vehicles out of service for these officers, then you don't have something in the fleet that you might need for one of the deputies on the street. And so I don't want all of us up here on the board to just think this is a great idea, and he can just keep absorbing costs. So I'd rather be honest with everyone. There are costs when you do these things, and it's not just you absorb it, you absorb it, you absorb it, because at some point, the money's not there, or the equipment won't be there. And I just want the school district to recognize, too, that there are costs included on a vehicle. So I don't know if in the MOU, you want to put a small percentage to do repair work or replacement so much per year to help compensate. And that's what I mean by how do we solve this together. But they have to help pay part of the costs necessary for us to be able to replace the vehicles or maintain them.
And I've taken note of everything you've said, and I appreciate that. And I'm going to ask Kathy to step in just so, because I think we're pretty close to winding down the questions.
Probably, maybe. I don't know. I haven't weighed in yet.
I want Kathy to chime in at this point, because it does go to Ms. Bagwell's statements.
Let me ask, I mean, let me ask, you got, we got Chairman Swerzick here. You know, that slide up there says, each governing body assumes 50% of the total local government cost. How do you understand that? What do you understand that to mean?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Board of Supervisors, for the record, Ron Swerzick, Carton City School Board President. What we, at the meeting that the sheriff came and Kathy came to make this presentation, the cost for us at the end of year four was approximately $140,000 to $150,000 going forward. And Brad, that's why I wanted to address your numbers. And Kathy is, I hope I'm correct in saying that. We were told, and it was our understanding, there would be no additional costs as far as vehicles or any other type of equipment that goes along with this. So I think we ought to have that understanding. And, you know, as far as the school district is concerned, the programs absolutely make sense. The costs, let's just address those. And Brad, I think you had some different numbers going forward, and that kind of concerned me at the end of year four. And I want us all to be clear, our, from our understanding, from the school district, is $140,000 to $150,000 a year going forward, and that was for the three officers. Is that, and I want to, this is what you understand also?
No.
Okay.
I think that's why we're having the discussion, Ron, is we want to make sure that the school district recognizes that they're in for 50% of the program cost, and it's not necessarily $140,000 per year as we keep going on.
Okay.
Actually, we don't have the number details, and maybe it would be better if Kathy gave us some details, because all we see is the amounts of these matches without the detail of the numbers. So maybe in fairness...
Kathy, go ahead. Maybe you could...
Yeah, maybe that will help us.
Sure. Good morning, Kathy Heath, for the record. When we presented this program to the school district, we did it from a perspective of a grant application. The sheriff and I had talked previously about the issue of vehicles, about the issue of fuel. And for us, fuel is no different than, you know, does it cost more to operate the lights if we have more people in this room or not? No. We have a fuel cost associated with our department, and that's what we pay. So we presented this from terms of, what does the grant cover from a personnel perspective, and what doesn't it cover? And I think ongoing cost, you know, it's difficult, as Nancy probably knows very well. We know what insurance costs today. We know what PERS costs today, all those benefits cost today. And based on those numbers at the end of, in year four, we're looking at approximately $300,000 from a personnel perspective, absent any major increases in benefits that we, nobody can know for certain. So I think $150,000, as Ron mentioned, is a good number going forward from a personnel perspective for three people.
Well, the question, the question goes a little bit further than that. It says, are there capital costs that are going to be incurred after year four, or now, that maybe are not included in that number, Kathy?
Well, you know, obviously, that's possible. What we never talked about, but what is the threshold? How many FTEs are added to the sheriff's office before it triggers the need for a new vehicle, or the need for a new, you know, additional capital items? We are going to absorb, we can handle right now, today, three additional people with our current fleet. That's what our discussions were, and moving forward, we're fine with that.
But you're going to need to replace the vehicles. So let me understand, how many miles are you anticipating, then, that the officers are going to go to homes for your truancy program? I mean, I'm assuming there are real costs, and the fleet will decline sooner. You'll utilize it more. I actually think you need money, Ken, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to be realistic, that there's a cost to this program that we're going to have to fund, and we have to realize that now, not four years from now.
I absolutely appreciate everything you're saying, and Brad. I absolutely appreciate everything you're saying. What I am trying to do is hold down the cost to the taxpayers.
But it's...
What I am desperately trying to do is avoid shooting myself in the foot and saying, here, I got a grant for three officers. Can I have six more vehicles? And by the way, I need a cool gun and this whole gadget thing that I, I think it's the wrong path to take. I feel like it's my responsibility to hold the cost down as much as possible. And along that side, we did, just two months ago, purchase a vehicle out of seizure funds, using alternatives to the taxpayers. Is that a good way of putting it? I don't want to burden the taxpayers every time I turn around. It's difficult enough in that the perception that we're out there and we can do everything, and we just cannot. Each one of you, I'm very well aware, is receiving all sorts of complaints about speeders. Traffic enforcement went away in 2010. We just don't have the bodies. I just threw this in as an example. We just do not have the bodies anymore. That's our overtime. And you can see in 2010, it skyrocketed. When, today, when an officer is hired, there is no backfill. I have to use overtime. When an officer is down for an injury, he's covered by overtime. To avoid that issue in this program, as I've said, we are not going to backfill. I believe that three officers is sufficient to handle our school district.
Okay. Brad, did you want...
Do you want to go next?
No, go ahead. Go.
Hey, Nancy. So if I understand correctly, you're saying that you have re-forecast the C-Tax estimates going forward based on the 2015, 2014, 2015 numbers. You know, I look at economic trending every day. I can see us going into a recession in the 2018, 2019 time period, which falls within this program. And actually falls in the time of this program when we have to come up with the most amount of money. So my question is, if we, if the projections, the new projections don't pan out, do we then go to contingency to fund this? Is that our alternative, or are there other alternatives?
We could use contingency, but also we have, it looks like we might have additional fund balance that we could use.
Follow-up on what that, if that did happen, the obligation is only for one year after the initial period.
Four years.
One additional year without grant.
One. Okay. All right. All right, folks.
And can I just add to that, too, Nancy? When you spoke of your projections, those were conservative projections in terms of how you were projecting out. You said that the C-Tax was up 7%, but you were only forecasting 4% with regards to this, correct?
That's correct. I just maintain the 4% increase through 2020.
Right. That's not the issue, though. The issue is if we go the other way. If we have a recession, then the sales tax revenues go down. Also, going back to some of the things that Lori was mentioning, the concern here, what I'm getting the feeling here is that everybody supports the program, but we want to be honest about what the true cost of this program is. So Ron, my numbers include uniforms, vehicles, equipment, things of that nature, that are in actual cost of the program, whether anybody's actually talked about what those specific numbers are. Those costs still exist, and Kenny can say that they'll absorb them for as long as they can, but they can't absorb them forever. And if we don't talk about them now, then when Kenny includes those items in his budget going forward, the city pays all of it. And so I think what Lori's concern is, and what my concern has been, is that if this is a program for the schools, we just want to be a full partner in this program, and we don't want to get stuck funding all the additional items down the road. We just want to have this conversation, be very open about what this program is and what the cost is today, in the fourth year, and then moving forward after that. is a program for the schools, we just want to be a full partner in this program, and we don't want to get stuck funding all the additional items down the road. We just want to have this conversation, be very open about what this program is and what the cost is today, in the fourth year, and then moving forward after that if we choose to continue with the program, which is another thing that I'd like to see. I want to make sure that this comes back to us in three years so that we can review it and see if this is something that we want to continue or not.
I'm going to ask Kathy to chime in because there are some details there. This is going to be something that we're going to have to address every year because it's in the budget. It is a grant that's there, and it diminishes in the amount that it funds. So every year, this is going to come up. And as we continue beyond that third year, the fourth, fifth, sixth, whatever, however many, each of the two governing bodies is going to have that discussion. They have no choice because it's a budget item. I want to... Before we get too far off track, I want Kathy to address just a couple of things, and that's the requirements of the grant in that we have this meeting today. The mayor will have to sign off the grant, and these MOUs are a portion of... Are a requirement of it.
They are absolutely a requirement of it. And there's some sign-off processes that we'll have to go through after, you know, should this pass going forward. But with regard to the question about the ongoing or the year three even, I'll say year three, Supervisor Bonkowski, in terms of bad financial issues, there's always the ultimate statement to make, and that is an inability to pay. And that clause is in this grant just as it is in every other grant that we get. If we can establish that dire of a situation where there's an inability to pay, then there would be a way to get out of the grant. But in terms of the other items that are non-allowable to the grant, such as uniform allowances, physical fitness pay, those types, even a small amount of overtime, I've included 100% of those costs in the match dollars. So when I talk about the $150,000, for example, that includes having to buy uniforms. That includes every five years, having to buy a new vest. Those items are included in there as well because they're true costs for us. And we would have to bring this back on an annual basis because we'll have to bring back to you the matching amount that's required, and we'll have to show in the match the revenue side from the school district.
Anybody else?
Well, I guess, Nancy, as long as we're... As long as we're looking at the crystal ball again, I mean, in one sense, you know, you say that you raise the estimate, which, you know, that looks like a pretty good deal. But I mean, you could say, you know, maybe that... Maybe those funds, those excess funds that are gained by raising the estimate should go somewhere else. Roads.
That's correct. That would be a decision up to the board.
Well, that's where I come down. I, you know, I appreciate the issue of projecting, and I take the sheriff and his word that, you know, he's not going to... He's not going to come back here for, say, additional vehicles, additional fleet vehicles, maybe replacement vehicles. But when I look at it, this program in terms of its effectiveness for our community, I think this is one of the most valuable things we can do. Crime and helping is a big issue. You know, we've been through it. We've had deputies shot. We had one deputy shot. Part of that, I believe, is our young people not making good choices in life and not learning how to make good choices. And I think it's... You know, that's why I asked the question about, you know, who... What kind of officer is going to be in a school? Because I think if you put the right officers in the school, even if they're carrying a gun, which I got, if they can help kids, one, make right choices, whether it's going to their home or whatever, or just kibitzing with them in the halls, and, two, if they can give... Present a feeling that cops are not their enemy, I think we do more for society and our community than you can put a dollar value on it. And I know that we always want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our dollar, but there are some times, I think, when issues such as this come forward. You can't really analyze it in terms of return on investment or whatever. There are societal things that are a benefit. And so, you know, I think that this is something, you know... And I don't even know if you know how... I guess there are some goals, you know, that we can see how it works. I mean, I got that. I saw from your sheet. I don't know if there's a goal where you can really determine a societal benefit. But, you know, I... Anecdotally, I happened to talk with Detective Humphrey back there on the way in.
Yeah, press conference.
Press conference. You know, about on Nevada Day where he had... You know, he was in the schools, and he had a 28-year-old male come up to him during Nevada Day and say, thank you for what you did for me in helping me make the right choices in life. And, you know, that guy's 10 years out of school. That's what I... That's hard to quantify in terms of its dollar value, but there's clearly a societal value to it. And, you know, I know Woody said it's $200,000 for a murder trial. If I were to ask you what it is for a capital case, you're over a million.
Yeah, potentially, sure.
Yeah, potentially, yeah. Okay. I've said enough here, and I'd probably...
Well, I'd ask you... I'd prompt you to say one more thing because I did read... I've been out of town a week and trying to catch up on the press.
I know, been trying to find you.
There were comments in the newspaper about Carson City's livability and our crime rate, things that make this a good town to live in, things that make this an attractive town to raise families in, things that make this an attractive place to open a business in. There is a benefit to having a good, community-based public services, public safety, and I think that the quality of life is why we all live here. And I know that you had made comments about that, so I just appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, both... I mean, the board up here is correct. You know, we need to look at the dollars and expenses. That's fine. But I think that at the end of the day, you know, you have to weigh that against the value of the program, so I'll just let it go there. Okay. Anybody public comment? Yes, ma'am? Sure, come on up. The DA gave up his seat. Happily, he said.
Colleen Schiller.
Hi, Colleen.
Hi, how are you doing? I would like to speak in favor of the cops program. That's what we called it. Before I came here and volunteered for Carson City Sheriff's Office, I volunteered at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office, and they used the cops model in the rural areas. And it was such a great benefit to have the same officers in one area over a prolonged period of time. People got to know them and trust them, and eventually came to them with information that was wide-reaching within the community, even though it's applied in a sort of different atmosphere. Say you had a meth lab somewhere in the area, and we're talking maybe 1,000 square miles, and someone came in with a complaint about a certain type of trash, like they're dumping Coleman lantern cans or whatever, and it found out that a lot of things that came in because people trusted our officer applied to a lot of other cases and saved the department. I would guess, I don't know for sure because I was just a volunteer, but a lot of money because as they start to put things together, they would find out that these applied to a case maybe they're working someplace else. And I think it's valuable that young people would feel comfortable coming to law enforcement and learn at an early age that they are friends and that they can have a positive impact on your life. And I think it's important that they be able to see the same people over a prolonged period of time and develop those relationships.
Thanks, Colleen. Okay. Any other public... Any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any board.
I will all make the motion.
Okay. I go.
I'm pleased to make the motion, and Bob, I couldn't agree with you more. So I move to accept the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Grant Award 2015UMWX0049 in the amount of $375,000.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries unanimous. Okay.
Thank you all very, very much. What a great crossroads.
Go work on the MOU. Money. All right. All right. Where are we now? Are we... Okay, let's take that up, and then we'll take... Let's take up the grant to HPO. SHPO? That's what it is. I thought it was hippo.
Yeah, SHPO. SHPO.
Ms. Susan Dor Pansky.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Tell us about the grant. Why shouldn't we do this?
Okay. So this is a request... I come in front of you every year requesting that you accept grants for the Historic Preservation Fund from the State Historic Preservation Office. This one is for $29,000 to support historic structures reports for the Nevada State Prison. If you recall, last year, we supported the prison by helping the nomination for the National Register. It has, by the way, I'm sure you saw in the paper, been nominated officially. And now, as a result of that document and priorities set with buildings within that document and a subsequent inventory, we are coming back to ask for money through the Historic Preservation Fund to do historic structures reports. And basically, what those will do is analyze structures within the prison complex to determine their viability for future uses, what kinds of improvements and upgrades they would need moving forward, and matters that are related to that. So I can answer any questions if you have them.
I'm sure you can, but Supervisor Bonkowski has a question, but you better be careful. Go.
You know my question already. This grant was awarded last March.
Right.
So walk us through why. We're just hearing it now.
Okay.
And did you bring pictures of the reason why?
Of course, always. I always bring pictures. Okay, so yes, every year, we apply at the end of the year for the following grant cycle. We... They're awarded generally in the spring. It was awarded at the end of March. I had talked to State Historic Preservation Office at the end of March. I told them that I wasn't going to be executing a funding agreement with them until the fall because I was on maternity leave. They were totally fine with that. The grant cycle is up in June of 2016, so we actually still have a significant amount of time to complete this task.
And my Shelley Aldean moment for the day, can you communicate to the state that development has three Es and not four?
I would be happy to.
I've got to add those up. Okay. Other board comments or questions? Public comments? Motion's in order. Somebody want to make a motion? Motion's in order. Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to accept a grant in the amount of $29,000 from the Nevada State Historic Preservation Office on behalf of the National Park Service for the 2015 Historic Preservation Fund Grant to provide historic structures reports for the Nevada State Prison.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carries unanimous. Okay. Do you want to be in recess for five minutes while we...
Yes.
We'll be in recess, and we're going to reconvene. We're passing the gavel over to Supervisor About, who's the Chair of Redevelopment. Give her the...
Downtown, so this has to do with actually buying some of the physical things that are needed for, to conduct special events downtown rather than a lower priority on the list is annually giving money to the, to the organizations to rent those things every event multiple times per year like tents, chairs, tables, barricades for, for street closures. So one of the recommendations is to actually buy that stuff and maybe even a place to store it within the downtown so it doesn't have to be transported. So that was their number two recommendation. Number three is property improvement incentive program. For example, I think what's actually been discussed and more specifically is a facade improvement program to go back to some sort of incentive program to share the cost of facade improvements to improve the look of buildings, frontages within the redevelopment district. Along with that, we've also discussed, and again, we'll come back with the program in more detail, but we have also discussed downtown design standards or, or more, more specific building design standards that would go along with that. So as we talk about implementing that, we would also talk about more specific design standards that to go along with that. Our number four is to continue special event funding. I think that's pretty self-evident. Although the discussion has been over time to figure out how to reduce the amount of funding given to organizations every year for special events, how to, how to phase out of that and, and, and save special event funding for truly new special events that bring a, a new event to the city. Number five is to assist with the extension of utilities for new development. Again, that could be a lot of things. Could be water, sewer, overhead power lines need to be undergrounded or other things that might be barriers to, to, to development of certain properties within the redevelopment district. Number six, to provide directional signage throughout the redevelopment district. We're doing quite a bit of that with the downtown project, but this would be to have some additional funding for, for more signs throughout the entirety of the district.
Lee, can I just ask you a quick question on that one, though it applies to the downtown redevelopment area one? Was RAC aware that the Visitors Bureau is obtained a grant to put in three kiosks that will go into that downtown area? I just want to make you aware of that, and they should be available by June of next year. So, just so you know that.
No, thank you. Did not know that.
Okay.
We'll, I'll contact. And then finally, another thing that's been discussed and comes up as properties become available occasionally is to have some funds to purchase property to redevelop. I'll just, I'll say on that, I, I think there's, there have been opportunities in the past, and I think we can probably think of properties that would be nice to redevelop typically, and, and certainly other redevelopment agencies do that. Typically, there are certainly larger redevelopment organizations do that. You know, the Las, the Las Vegas, North Las Vegas redevelopment districts are own property, and I think also in the city of Reno, and they manage them. That's, it, it becomes a more intensive management of redevelopment and redevelopment funds to do that, and you have a property, put out RFPs, but, but that's another thing that, that you may wish to consider. So I'll, I'll finish up the presentation of that. Again, we're not trying to pick specific individual properties, projects necessarily at this time. Our goal is to come away with some comments, some overall goals, so that we can come back and go through this to come back with the plan that would lay out how this would, how these different projects would fit in terms of funding and stretching out over, over time, how we would implement that. I think particularly certainly looking out within about five years and potentially past that. So I'll, I'll be available for questions now.
Thank you, Lee, for that, and I appreciate RAC working hard and diligently on this, and it's an exceptional list. I'll open this up to the board now for discussion. Brad?
Okay, just a couple of notes. You know, assisting with development for the utility undergrounds for development, I have some concerns about that one because you could literally eat up the entire redevelopment budget on one project that might only benefit two or three people. So I understand why we keep having the conversation about that, but I think the reality is that that would be a really tough one to actually do. Same thing for purchasing property. I agree with Lee. I think that one's really problematic. And then just a note to everybody that starting in 2020, we're going to have a significantly higher amount of money available in redevelopment. Starting in 2020, we'll have an additional $480,000 a year, and in 2021, approximately an additional $280,000 on top of the 480, so about $760,000 a year starting in 2021. So I think that we need to get in the mindset of starting to think long-term strategic planning on how, where and how we want to see redevelopment go, because we're going to have a lot of available funding to be able to do things, and we should be thinking about how we want to do it and set the infrastructure in place to implement those plans now.
I concur with what Brad's saying, and I think if you look at item two, that's one of the issues that RAC was discussing, is how do we quit funding special events? When we started looking at the detail of the applications, each of the people coming to the city or our existing events are renting equipment, and we're paying for it time and time and time again. So what other things can we do to provide infrastructure to support the need for special events downtown, but we, we reduce the cost to the redevelopment district by just buying it and having a replacement of those? It would be a lot less expensive for the ongoing use, and then begin to use new events, because we've provided the infrastructure that will help Taste of Downtown and all of the events. So I think that Brad's right, that it's time for us to start thinking a little more long-term and globally of, to what we want to achieve there. And I think RAC was really trying to do that as the number seven of the property redevelopment was that long-term. We might actually have $700,000, $800,000 and be able to effectuate a huge change in the redevelopment district if we wanted to. So I think that's where they were going with that one.
Well, hopefully in 2020, we do make some significant changes here within the redevelopment objectives. The way I'm reading this is that we're going to move to accept the recommendation, but at any time, even on, on page two, it says redevelopment authority may add items to this list or otherwise modify it for approval. So this is just a general outline of their objectives, and when they define those objectives, they'll come back to us as it's more redefined. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and in that statement also, I was also saying that if there are other things that we haven't thought of so far, even today, that, that should be on there, they could be added.
Did the RAC consider redevelopment funds for participating in the greening of America's Capitals on Highway 50? Or is that...
No, we haven't. No, we, no, that did, that did not, that didn't, hasn't, didn't come up. And that, with that program, you know, the, and this redevelopment list started, and discussion started before we were even awarded that, and so that wasn't discussed or recommended, but that could be something that, that we look at as well to...
Well, I think, I think, what I, I agree with what's just been said here. I think, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see us, I mean, if, I don't know if we're going to need money for that or not, but I suspect that, you know, somebody ought to be taking a look at that. And, you know, for me, that comes ahead of utilities, and it comes ahead of property development at this juncture in, in life. So, you know, I'd be happy, you know, putting that in somewhere, and even if it's, and then moving the undergrounding and stuff and down to the bottom, but that's just me.
Well, I think for, for a, for something like that, too, as we, as we think about it, is, it is certainly something as we go forward with this, we can start putting some cost to it, and, and then through the next round of the process, decide whether or not it gets included and, and when.
Yeah, because Highway 50 is, it's in, it's in this area.
That part, that William Street.
Only to here.
Only to Stewart?
Oh.
Does it only go to Stewart?
Yeah, William Street past, past the park.
This facility right here, right?
No, all of, all of, yeah, all of, all of, all of Mills Park.
Yeah, Mill, right here. The facility we're sitting in.
Yeah, I think it's from Salomon.
But not...
Yeah.
Brad, did you have a follow-up? All right, any other comments with regards from the board? Any public comment on this issue?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, yeah. Welcome, Doug.
Hello. On Monday, I met with Lee just to discuss the future of Third Street, and the reason why was because you're closing it.
Can you, can you put your name into the record, please?
Shirley, thank you very much. Doug Kramer from Mom Pop Steiner, Third and Carson Street. And since Third Street would be closed as of next year, construction's being gone, Lee and I have started to discuss about events on Third Street. We already have music that's being done by Furkin. He does Friday and Saturday nights. And I came to Lee to discuss a farmer's market that I'd like to run with another person who's, is a farmer, who's also a person who has three different farmer's markets that he operates, one in Gardnaville, one in Tahoe, one in Incline. I'd like to partnership myself with this gentleman. And also, I'd like to do a movie night on Thursday nights. Friday night and Saturday nights are basically frickin' Fridays, frickin' Saturdays, but those not, are not family evenings. A farmer's market, a movie night. Now, that goes back to your inner structure number two, buying something that would make it so that we could have a movie night every Thursday night during the summertime, drawing people to Third Street. That's basically what I think this whole thing is being developed on Third Street for. So I was invited here to let you know that I'm going to be coming back and asking for money to produce farmer's market and something on Thursday nights as a movie night. Somebody want to say something?
That's wonderful, Doug. I think that's great suggestions and things that are much needed. So I'm glad you came to bring that forward to us.
Also, on the farmer's market, I'm not looking at taking the parking lot that's used on Saturdays. I've talked to planning already, and there should be no problem taking part of Third Street and going south on Curry Street, asking for variance to be able to close that on Wednesday nights, and having maybe grow to where it takes all of Curry Street and Fourth Street, so that it's a, if you look at Sparks and Reno, they've separated their farmer's market. There is not a farmer's market there anymore, comparatively speaking. Now, if you look at all the employees that work down here from different areas, you're talking about 25 to 30% of employees in the building, state, city, and other places that used to, when we had the farmer's market back in the 90s, would stay on that night, have dinners, meet their friends, and those would be all tax dollars. And that's pretty much what I think this board is all about, tax dollars, to where you can cover the things. So I'm just wanting to let you know that I will be coming back with Lee to apply.
Thank you. Any other comments with regards to that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know, he was looking at me. So in our conversation, and I did mention that I, I think this is consistent with what we've heard regarding the project, is we're not just going to build the sidewalk and the plaza and, and do nothing, and that we need things now to, to bring the people to the, to the area, to help the businesses and, and help the economic growth of the downtown. So I think it's very consistent with that. And this is, we'll continue to work with Doug and others. I know there's been other conversations about, more generally and downtown-wide about coordination of events once the improvements are done. So we'll continue to work with Doug and others on that.
Any other public comment? If not, I will bring this back to the board.
I'll try, I'll try a motion. Laurie said, time for you to get the hot seat crawl. I move to accept the recommendations from the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee regarding redevelopment objectives, programs, and project priorities for the future use of uncommitted redevelopment funds with the following changes, that their item number five, extension of utilities for new development be placed at the bottom near the purchase of property to redevelop, and that we add as, so above, right towards, right above those, so it would be, third from last would be a, that there be a consideration of Highway 50.
The Green Project?
Greening of America's Capital Project, Highway...
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second, for discussion.
For discussion.
Do we want to eliminate?
Sorry?
Do we want to...
Well, there, it's more than one redevelopment area that that applies to.
So you want to leave it in?
We'll leave it in. I just want to make them aware.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Can I just ask for a clarification on the kiosk? Will that allow the people like Taste of Downtown to sell their tickets through that kiosk?
Yes, it will.
I just attended a meeting the other night, so I'll put a notice out to everyone.
Joel is interfacing with Eric from IT to do that. And so, yes, it will allow for purchase of tickets.
That's great.
Yes.
And what did the action include regarding directional signage? That's last.
All right. I, I, another, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 21 to adjourn as the redevelopment authority and reconvene as the board supervisors.
Before you hand the gavel back, we're going to take up item number 23. This is the Airport Authority to appoint one member.
That's right.
I'm going to disclose and abstain from participating because my law partner, Steve Takis, is counsel to the Airport Authority, and it's improper for me to participate or vote on this matter. So Karen, you've got it again. How's that? Thanks. Believe the dais, too.
All right. City manager, are the candidates all here? Okay.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. How this procedure works, of course, as you well know, we're here to appoint one member to the Carson City Airport Authority for the pilot position for a term that expires October of 2019. Each one of us will ask you a question or a few questions, and then, once we're finished, I'll ask you for any further comment that you'd like to make, and then you're welcome to stay in the audience and listen to the others. All right? All right. So Ray, I guess the question that I have for you is, how do you envision growing the airport? If you had a crystal ball, what would, what would be your, your vision for the airport?
Cross that question off.
I think its present status is sufficient to do what, what the community and the area benefits mostly from. It's an uncontrolled airport, as you know. It means that we don't have a tower, and it means that the authority kind of takes care of, of everything in terms of maintenance and that. So it's pretty well, it's pretty well set up at this point with the, with the expansion and upgrade that was done most recently, which I was happy to be on the board way back when, when the master plan was actually developed for those things. I think it serves those aircraft which find it necessary and comfortable to come here. The realignment and the widening of the runway and the addition of the other taxiways really do accommodate nicely to the business people that find it necessary to come to town, and also those folks out of the South that come here for the legislative kind of things they need to do. So I think we are really served well with what we have. So I think if we just maintain it the way it is, I think until there is some real need shown for something different, I think it's, it's just fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll start down the line. Brad?
All right, Ray, Ray, Karen covered...
Brad, my middle name is Bradbury, and I'm named after my father. So I'm happy to tell you that I run infrequently into other Brad's, and I'm pleased, I'm pleased to see your name.
Well, my name, my name's Brad Ford, and I'm named after Henry Ford, who is a distant relation, so.
Cool.
Wrong side of the family, get no money. So my question, Karen covered development. In the last legislative session, I think it was SB 125 that was then incorporated, and I think SB 19, the abatement of, of tax for airport repairs should stimulate growth at the airport. So kind of give us your thoughts on where you think that increased business, how much will come in, and how do you think that will affect the airport, and would that lead to changes in the operational aspect of the airport to handle that growth?
Well, the development of the center triangle was included in the master plan, that development being seen that possibly in the future, other hangars or possibly FBOs would be accommodated in that. I think the airport is served well geographically with respect to the amount of property that's available. As you probably know, the original plan for that airport was to include those businesses which were on the north side to actually have through-the-fence access, and in fact, title includes on those properties which are immediately adjacent to be able to go through. And there are a couple of businesses over there that are accommodated by that. I really was happy to see that when a few of us suggested to keep open, now I've had a small brain lapse, the name of the street that's adjacent to, to Mustang there, that is still maintained. So we have a nice access from the north that would accommodate any future development in that triangle, albeit the case that it probably would cause there to be an interruption on that northernmost taxiway. The fact that the port-to-port hangars are in fact portable, in the future, it's been suggested by some that those could be moved or done away with, and that property would be able to be used for some other FBO operations. So I think it's, I think it's fair to say that, once again, the airport has set itself up in that master plan such that it could accommodate those kinds of expansions if and when they became necessary.
Laurie?
I'm going to ask a more generic question to, to see what thought process you can come up with. So what value do you believe the airport provides to our city, and what would your role be on the board in enhancing that value?
Well, we are, we're kind of a vacation area, aren't we? We're adjacent to the lake, and, and we are easily utilized airport-wise to people that actually come into Reno also. So we see a lot of tourist activity on the, on the airport. So I think, I think the fact that we do accommodate the tourism that's to us, and also the fact that the fellow that has the fuel island and has recently purchased El Arro has maintained a very competitive price in fuel. So we see, we see a lot of, of $100 hamburgers, flyers, they're referred to, where they'll fly on the weekend and, and come here, they exercise their planes, and they also, you know, keep current in their ability to fly. And they come here specifically to fuel. We used to go to Yerington to do that, because Yerington had a really cost-effective gas. But, but I think that in terms of any changes that might be made to accommodate that, maybe something on the weekend to be sure that we have ourselves covered through the weekend process with, with folks on the airport that could handle any situations that might occur. Was that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Tim?
Good afternoon. There has been a complaint filed within the city as the property users are not properly using their hangars on the airport. In that sense, do you have, do you own any hangars, and are you personally usage compliant within the Airport Authority? And if you do not have a hangar, what is your solution to solve this misuse?
I'm not sure it's a misuse. I do have a hangar, and I keep my airplane in it. And there was a, there was a really large legal conversation just last year that extended over a two-year period at Chandler Airport in Arizona, wherein the FAA questioned those kinds of occupancies. But Chandler and other airports like Torrance in Southern California are significantly different than our airport here for the fact that the majority, if not all, the land from our airport was gotten by way of the Winners Ranch, where they dedicated land as part of their lands to the airport to be used as airports. So there were no, in that case, any federal dollars funded for the geography. And then, secondly, and, and just as important, there are no hangars on the airport that in any way have used federal funds, and all of the hangars on the airport are privately owned. So it was spoken to pretty significantly at Chandler that that difference maybe was well worth looking into. There has been some comment that you can't get a hangar, and this precipitates the conversation about, gee, I have an airplane and I can't get a hangar at Carson City. That simply is not factual, because there are signs up right now on, on hangars that call this number for rent. So we can, at the airport, continue to accommodate anybody who wants to move from Sted or wants to move from, from Reno to here.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, except that I'm really pleased to be considered for the fact that in my retirement years, I spent quite a bit of time at the airport polishing the airplane and, and just kind of hanging out. So I'm really aware of, of what goes on at the airport. I think it's very important that it be considered that a pilot that has a plane and spends some time around the airport is actually one of the members of the board, so that that kind of onsite information can be, can be provided and be part of the conversation when, when things are discussed for the airport. So I'm really pleased to, to volunteer for this, secondary to having... So I'm really pleased to volunteer for this, secondary to having half a dozen of my hangar rats ask me to come and see if I wouldn't stand in again and do this. It was a long time ago that I was on the Airport Authority, but I'm pleased to throw my hat in the ring again. I'd like to do that.
Thank you very much. And again, as I said, you're welcome to stay and listen to the others if you so choose.
Great. And available for another question later on if something comes up.
Again, welcome. And how this procedure works, each one of us will ask you a question or questions, and then at the end I'll ask you if you'd like to add any further comments. And you're welcome to stay in the audience for the last interview if you'd like. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. My question to you is, how do you envision growing the airport?
I think that we're at a critical time with the Carson City Airport with the amount of industrial expansion that's going on east of us. And I think that this town is perfectly positioned to bring more of general aviation activity to the airport, and I'd like to see that happen.
Good morning, Linda. What value does the airport provide to the city? And what role do you think you can play on the Airport Board to enhance that value?
I think that Carson City Airport adds incremental value to the quality of life that we've been talking about. It also provides a critical area of access for emergency and commercial contact here in town. And as far as my contribution to that is concerned, I think that the background that I have with the legislature and so forth will give me an opportunity to review the rules and regulations and the current NRS as it applies to our city, and perhaps make it a little bit more viable and accessible to a larger group of people commercially.
My question is, there has been a complaint filed within the city as the property users are not properly using the hangars on the airport. In that sense, how many hangars do you personally have? And are you compliant with the airport rules and regulations? And if you do not have a hangar, what is your solution to solve this misuse?
I do have a hangar. I lease hangar number six from Ingrid. I have for 10, 12 years now. I am compliant. I know that there are people who do not have airplanes in their hangars. I think that part of the solution to that is recognizing which hangars do not have compliant use. And if it gets to the point where that is an issue with the FAA, that we address those appropriately. There are, I have to admit that I am a very private property person, and if someone at one point had an airplane in that hangar, it's being used for something else, and they think that they may have one in the future, I would have a real hard time pulling it from them. If they're using it simply as storage, that may be a different issue. And as it's presented to the board, we'd have to discuss that.
Brad.
This last legislative session, the legislature passed, I think it was SB 19, I think it ended up being SB 19, there was an abatement of tax on services and repairs. How do you think that's going to affect growth at the airport? How would we accommodate that growth? And what changes would you anticipate because of that growth, if any?
That's an item that I haven't given very much thought to. However, if you're talking about the sales tax abatement, I think that encourages people, for instance, Steve Posick, who has a repair facility, I know he's working pretty much at full bore currently. I've known him for a number of years. I would think that that would encourage people who do need services on their airplanes to keep the aircraft in good repair. It may encourage people from out of the area also to come in and use those facilities to avoid that cost. And other than that, I haven't given it much thought. Thank you.
All right, Linda, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Does the city provide any support to the Airport Authority if the Airport Authority Board came up with ideas for BDRs to submit those to the legislature before the next session?
City manager, do you want to address that?
Yeah, we certainly could do that. I mean, if that, if, just as we're the pass-through authority in terms of federal grant dollars and things like that, we could facilitate, you know, bringing via our legislative coalition a BDR.
And just to add to that, Linda, there's a four-county legislative coalition, which Nick and I both sit on. We're actually working on bill drafts now. So if you have anything that you want to bring forward, it should be now and not right before the next session.
Having worked as Governor Gwynn's policy analyst, I know those deadlines, and it would be my intention to look through the documentation that supports that and come forward with that if I were appointed.
Thank you very much. And as I said, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
How this procedure works is each of us will ask you a question or questions, and then afterwards I'll ask you if there's any other comments that you would like to make. So I'll start.
Thank you.
My question is for you, is how do you envision growing the airport?
By involving the community. The airport is actually a community asset for all the citizens. I prefer the metaphor I like to use is parks, baseball fields, in terms of a community airport.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. There has been a complaint filed within the city as the property users are not properly using their hangars on the airport. In that sense, how many hangars do you personally have? And is their usage compliant with the airport rules and regulations? And if you do not have a hangar, what is your solution to solve this misuse?
Yes, I have a hangar. My airplane is in the hangar. You've perhaps inadvertently stepped into a very sticky wicket of a problem. There's currently, buried inside Title 19 is a paragraph that says each hangar must have an aircraft in it. And it also has a, can I call this, an inspection right, if you will. This issue was discussed at the Mendon Tahoe Airport about six years ago. One solution was they allowed non, up to, I believe it's 20% of the square foot area in each building to be quote "non-aircraft." Usually that gets down to people have got a canoe, and they like to park the canoe against the wall because that takes up less space than the garage at home. I don't know, when you use the word complaint, I don't know if that's a formal complaint. I heard the gentleman's presentation last month. And again, I think he was inadvertently going into a sticky wicket. There's currently a rulemaking proceeding at the FAA on this issue. The Title 19 refers to the fire code. You have all your building codes, you have your grants, and although we'd like to think of it as a simple thing to solve, it's not.
Thank you.
Brad.
Michael, my question is, in the last legislative session, the legislature passed, I believe it was SB 19, which is an abatement of tax, sales tax on services and repairs. How do you see that affecting business at the airport? If it stimulates growth, how would you accommodate that growth?
How would I accommodate?
As a member of the Airport Authority.
You have to use the existing procedures, application procedures in Title 19, and look at each individual proposal. I don't, you know, I don't know how else to answer that question.
And Lori.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you tell me what value you think the airport provides the city and how you could enhance that value if you were selected as a board member?
Well, one, it lets you get here from almost anywhere else. Secondly, I think the real value is, and what I would attempt to do, is promote the airport as a destination point to Carson City.
Michael, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I have a slightly prepared statement.
Go right ahead.
My name is Michael Greedy. I am offering public service by promoting Carson City Community Airport. I am asking the Board of Supervisors to appoint me to a specific seat, which is a pilot who operates an aircraft on the airport. I have experience, I have been in Carson City since 1986. The aircraft I currently have is my third aircraft, which indicates I have no sense I have experience both in making and reviewing public records and transcripts. I have had a course in governmental accounting. More importantly, I'm willing to make an investment of my personal time and skills in researching the background materials for the problems presented to the Carson City Airport Authority. There are immediate projects, one of which I've already talked to, which is the aeronautical use. Currently, the airport is working on a traffic pattern, adotment project, if you will. What I would add to that is insisting upon high-quality graphics and creating promotional material, as I've seen at other airports. And we're going to have ongoing issues, basically under the quote "drones" things. Additionally, I'm familiar with the Nevada statutes and the open meeting law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, you're welcome to have a seat in the audience while we make this decision. There's no comment coming in after this. All right, so I'm going to bring this back to the board. And, okay, Lori, you want to go first?
I'm willing to jump in first or something. I want to thank all the candidates for applying. You're all fine, would be fine appointments. Based on the responses today, I'd like to say that I want to support Linda Law. I thought she was the one that said she wanted to grow the airport, where the others seemed to think it was okay where it was at now. And so for that reason, I would like to support Linda.
As Lori mentioned, this is the hardest part of our job. In this particular case, we have three applicants that are very well-qualified for the position. And so in most cases, we each have our own scoring system, and the decision can come down literally to tenths of one percentage point between the candidates. And that is the case today, and my highest score was Linda.
Jim.
And again, it is a very tough decision. I think all candidates who came here today are well-qualified for this position. I do serve on the Airport Authority, and right now my selection is, again, similar to Brad and Lori's, and that is Linda Law as the selection made today.
I'm irrelevant, so. Therefore, I want to congratulate Linda and thank all the other applicants. We really appreciate you coming forward and applying for this position. Now, we need a final motion?
I move to appoint Linda Law to the Airport Authority to fill the pilot position for a term that expires October 2019.
Motion, a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And Bob, you can come back to the podium.
You want to just continue on?
To item number 24, non-action items. City manager, is there anything that you want to bring forward? Anything here from the board that you want to bring forward? Jim?
Yes, I do want to bring up on the city website, the Contact Us. It's a great link. I think it's very helpful for the community. I wonder if we should look at this and make it, I know the board has access to look at those and the responses from city staff, and maybe this is a possibility that this should be actually accessed from the public as well, not be something to think about. Also, other cities and communities have taken surveys of their citizens. I know we have done it years ago. I think it's something that the city may look at from a perspective of getting feedback from citizens, is a survey, community-wise. Also, I would like to recommend to city staff, when I attended the noise ordinance and the RV parking ordinance meetings, I specifically asked staff to contact all board members to see if they'd like to attend any of these meetings. And any, I know a quorum could not take place unless all three or three members attended, and that would not be the case. I just think it's a possibility that the city should look at keeping all board members in the loop, or the opportunity to attend any such in-house meetings, which will affect the city and the community as well. And I bring this up as a, a great example is the Brown Street project. I was involved in bringing this to the city, and I found out there's been meetings about how we're going to move forward with the Brown Street project and street. I was never contacted if I'd like to attend those meetings. And I think this is a possibility that the city staff should look at inviting all board members to any internal meetings and give us the opportunity to say yea or nay if we'd like to attend, and have a voice in how projects are moving forward within the community, and not just randomly select one board member. I do want to bring up the fact that we have not personally named the individuals to the charter committee, and it's been over a year now. We're still waiting for the policy of the board committees and commissions to return to this board for final approval. And I would like to have this board look at something and bring this back as an agenda item because Reno and Sparks have renegotiated their contract with waste management, in the sense that if we're going to move forward into the 21st century, we need to do something with recycling. And both, as I said, Sparks and Reno have renegotiated their contracts with waste management. Ours is not due until 2019. And to wait till 2019 to at least get single-cycle recycling into our community, we won't have it in until 2021 at the earliest if we wait to 2019. Other cities have brought this contract back, and they've renegotiated it. And I think this board, this community, should look at their obligation to better our community, and that is to bring back this waste management contract. I do want to congratulate the city manager... I do want to congratulate the city manager for, I know we got swamped with a lot of emails on deer crossing signs, which we all did, and I guess that's coming to a solution. You may want to look at the, I know we're talking about signage in the downtown corridor and so forth. There's a sign on Carson Street that says, "Library 900 Roop Street." I don't know what that sign's for, I can't, but it's between Ann and Sophie on Carson Street. And I think we should change that to say, "Public Parking," and have an arrow that goes over to the parking lot that's on Curry Street that has 16 spaces. And we should have another sign in there that says, "It's two-hour limit parking." That's only my opinion. Also, I would like to make a complaint about the parking spaces that we lost on Curry Street. They were taken away as the governor asked for security around his property on Carson Street. We lost all the parking. I think it's eight spaces on Curry Street. And I don't know who made the decision.
That's her.
I'm sorry, thank you very much. You're right, you're right. We lost all those parking spaces. I don't know how, as city taxpayers are paying for the streets, I don't know how the decision was made to paint all those spaces red without at least having a discussion about it. I'm not sure where that comes from. I would also like to mention the Community Development Department made a report of where we're headed and what's going on. And their report was spot-on. It was fabulous. I want to congratulate staff for doing this. And hopefully, other departments will provide other similar reports to the community as well as board members because that, that report in itself was really, really good. Thank you.
Any other comments? I would just like to say thank you to the Visitors Bureau and ultimately to the Cultural Commission, who will be collaborating with the Visitors Bureau on the banners that went down the street. They're awesome. They just, they show an energy and it's wonderful.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And I think that, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to compliment the Nevada Day Committee and the organization, their volunteers and their board. I mean, there was just a lot of people here for Nevada Day, and I don't think there was any particular problem that happened, but there were a lot of things going on that day. I mean, so many that I got tired of going. My feet got tired, man. I got, feet got tired, so. But I think they've done just a tremendous job and I think they ought to be commended for that, so.
I have one last public comment. Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I need a second.
All in favor?